Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the May 21st Joint Board of Education Meetings of Evanston Township High School and Evanston Skokie District 65. Could we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Thank you.
Here.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Chow.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. So, the first item on the agenda is Board and Superintendent's comments.
Thank you very much, and it's always a pleasure to be here with our colleagues in District 202 and looking forward to the conversations tonight. I have a couple of quick comments, a couple of things to share, and then we'll turn the microphone back over. I do, and I'm so pleased to announce tonight that King Arts has just received the exemplary Arts School Distinction from the Arts School Network. And so, they've been designated as a 2018 through 2023. It's a five-year distinction as an exemplary arts school by the Arts School Network, and will be honored at the 2018 Arts School Network Annual Conference in Orange County, California later on in October. The five-year designation is presented to a school that meets the principles of exemplary practice in strategically evaluating its purpose, operations, and educational programs focused on the arts, and we couldn't be more proud of King Arts and our staff there under the leadership of Dr. Jeff Brown. Speaking of the arts, we all in both school districts and the private schools in Evanston as well as the preschools got to celebrate the Yay Festival on Saturday, the Young Evanston Artists Festival, and I just want to give out a great shout-out to all the organizers. They've had a transition in the Yay structure, and parents and community members have helped to take that over, and it's really and truly an arts fair for Evanston. And despite the cold and rainy-ness of our May month, there was brightness in the artwork across both District 65 and District 202, and I just want to say thank you to all of the volunteers from ETHS, from District 65, from Northwestern, the Evanston Business Community, and many of our families who actually came and helped to participate. I also on Saturday had the honor to attend the Officer and Gentlemen Academy First Annual Empowerment Breakfast Awards for the Officer and Gentlemen Academy, which is a wonderful collaborative effort between the Evanston Police Department and District 65 where Evanston Police Officers are mentoring about eight or nine of our young men from our junior, from our middle schools. A fabulous, fabulous opportunity to see how mentorship can work so well. And Monique, you'll be pleased, two times there was a quote from Brother Mike, who's the spiritual architect of the Metta Media, and it was really about mentorship being a display of love. And the love in the room the other day was so fantastic between police officers and their mentees. And I do want to tip my hat to Officer Howard, to Adrian Harry's, Principal of Nichols Middle School, and Brian Harris, who's one of our staff members, who were the original founders of this great opportunity. Officer Howard and his colleagues, under the great support of Chief Addington, have carried on, and it's a wonderful example of how police officers who are members of the community can really embrace our young men in this case, and we couldn't be more happy on that. Also on Saturday, or yeah, this was on Saturday, Suni Kartha and I had the great opportunity to attend the annual Golden Apple Award for Excellence in Teaching and Leadership, where our own District 65 King Arts teacher Christine Mitchell was honored as one of the awardees. And Carla Stone, who is one of our Golden Apple winners from yours, was one of the Masters of Ceremony, and she was fantastic. If you watch the television show on WTTW Channel 11, you'll see Carla as a star as well as you'll see Kristy Mitchell, and we couldn't be more proud of Kristy as a kindergarten teacher and the work that she does over at King Arts to really stand tall for all of our teachers but for our kids. Finally, I wanted to just reiterate something that, especially since we're in joint session in April, over 30 social service agencies, including the two school districts, including the City of Evanston, including the Police Department, embraced a statement about equity, and I wanted to just read it. This was dated April 27th, but it's actually a very important statement about the important work that we are doing in District 65, that you're doing in District 202, and that the agencies around town are doing. And what the statement says is, "Over the past several years, leading institutions across Evanston have embraced an equity agenda focusing on addressing issues of race, racism, and bias. We have stepped forward to have honest and open dialogue and discussions about racial equity. We have stepped forward to offer racial equity training opportunities that include, among others, beyond diversity and seed training. We realize that these trainings and discussions are not easy and are uncomfortable for some, yet we recognize the potential to change our institutions so that they truly belong to people from all races and walk of life. That requires sustained and focused commitment to addressing race and equity head-on. In recent weeks, several individuals have publicly criticized our efforts. As leaders in Evanston, we stand in strong support of our equity work, and will continue to engage citizens in honest and open dialogue about race. And by so doing, we will create a socially just and welcoming Evanston where all people of all backgrounds have opportunities to fulfill their true potential." And this is signed from the likes of the Childcare Network of Evanston, and the Covenant Nursery School, and the Evanston branch of the NAACP, Evanston Cradle to Career, the Police Department, the Public Library, Foundation 65, the McGaw YMCA, Northwestern University, Piven Theater Workshop, and I can go on and on, over 30 organizations which also include District 202 and District 65. And that's my, those are my comments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thanks, Paul. Great to have you and all of our District 65 friends and colleagues and allies here. And I know that this will be another good chance for all of us to really focus on what matters most, and that's the young people in Evanston. I was reflecting as I was looking around the room and reminding myself that we are really looking at two entities that focus hugely on pre-K all the way through 12th grade, students and young people in this community. And then, these two entities support Cradle to Career, which has created a very bold and audacious goal around prenatal to kindergarten for the youth of the community. So, we're really doing a pretty ambitious job of wrapping our arms around all of the young people in this community and reminding ourselves that as we sit here today, we're here to serve all of them, all of their families, and to really do the outreach and do the heavy lifting so that their life outcomes are as positive as we can possibly help them be. I'm so thrilled because we have a state champion to honor tonight, and usually we don't have 12 board members, and all of these distinguished people, when we honor a state champion at one of our board meetings, so this is an especially big night to be able to do this. Chris Levatino, our Athletic Director, is coming forward, and I think he and Coach Gunter are going to do the honors of introducing our distinguished senior.
Thank you, Dr. Witherspoon. It is an honor to present to not only our District 202 but also our District 65 School Board tonight because we're recognizing someone who is a product of both districts and whose grandfather actually served as principal for Haven Middle School, and it's an honor to be able to show her off to all of you and the accomplishments she's made. For our District 202 Board members, you'll remember that we came here in the fall to recognize her for making history in a program that's not too accustomed to as much success with girls cross-country. She's the first runner in the history to finish second place in the state in cross-country, and then in the spring she transitioned over to a sport that is extremely used to a lot of success in sports here with our track and field program, and yet she still made history again in that program as well, winning the 800-meter state championship this past Saturday. That had not been done in ETHS history, as I said, and to introduce her and say a few more words about her is a man who's experienced a ton of success. He's been our head coach for girls track and field for over 25 years. He's won seven state championships during that time, and just this past weekend led us to our 34th, 31st top-10 finish in the state of Illinois, which is a IHSA record as well. So, please welcome Coach Fenny Gunter.
Thank you this evening. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for having us this evening. Coach Seibert, Yeva's event coach, couldn't make it here this evening, and I just wanted to let you know he's an ETHS alumni and very proud of this young lady. The accomplishments this young lady attained this year were just extraordinary, and I can say that from the heart because I've seen some pretty extraordinary things over the 36 years in this program. She led by example, and our entire group of young ladies and coaching staff benefited from that. True student athlete, which we all benefited from, District 65 and 202, showing that our kids can do multiple task things and do them both well, or multiple things well. This young lady is also a high school All-American, number two in the U.S., another trait that, of course, the expectations that we all in this community set for our kids and ourselves has met fully. On behalf of our program and our former athletes and coaching staff, we present our 48th state IHSA champion, Miss Yeva Michelin.
I would just like to thank you all for having me again here tonight. I remember back in November being here and saying that I hope to do better in track, and I think that through the environment that I've been in, you know, going to Haven and going to ETHS, because I grew up in Chicago for the first part of my life, so moving here has just given me all the tools and all the things that I think I used to succeed. So, I just want to say thank you guys for your work for making things like this possible for all student athletes. Thank you, guys.
So, Yeva, you know the drill, but I need to explain it to the District 65. We always invite our honoree to come around the horseshoe, and we stand and shake hands, and then we have a prized pin, which you'll get another one, acknowledging that you have been honored at this board meeting. So, Coach, if you would both come around the inside of the circle, we want to congratulate you. You've got a collection of pins for all your updates. Congratulations. Coach, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. That was so exciting. Wondering if we have any comments from any board members? You will have many opportunities in the meeting. All right, Candace.
We spoke about this last District 65 Board meeting, but one of the items in our consent agenda tonight that we'll be approving is a project at Park School for an updated outdoor play area, and I just wanted, on behalf of our board, to pay special thanks to the Park Community, the Park PTA, several of whom are back there, as well as the broader Evanston community for all the time and effort into making this project possible. They raised just probably over, at this point after last night, $170,000 to contribute to this project, which is phenomenal. And I think, you know, both of our districts in this joint program with Park are excited to have accessible, wonderful outdoor play area for our kids at Park, so thank you all so much.
All right. Thank you. All right, so I'm going to move right along with the agenda. The first item on the agenda is comments from the public. Dr. Beavis?
We have one person signed up for public comment, Stephanie Kimmel. And public comment is limited to three minutes. I get the task of timing it. I'll let you know when there's two minutes and one minute left, and then I'll fumble with the phone when it goes off.
I also am here to speak a little bit about Park School and special education in District 65. I'm a proud alum of District 65 and ETHS, class of '86, and I wanted to congratulate the Park School PTA as well and its fundraising efforts. I joined as a volunteer just because I saw this need and this small but mighty group of people and wanted to help out, but I also wanted to just point out that I'd like for us to keep these kids on our minds and on our agenda, not just when the PTA takes on a special project. Our motto in District 65 is "Every child, every day, whatever it takes," and I think this is a great example of, you know, what the community and the district can do together. I wanted to transfer on to talking a little bit more about some of the other kids with special needs in our district. There was an article in Forbes last week called "Why Johnny Still Can't Read and What We Can Do About It," and I wanted to read this quote. "Struggling readers from affluent families may get an early diagnosis of dyslexia and receive special education services when they're most likely to help, although even those families may have to battle reluctant districts. Children from poorer families who are disproportionately likely to struggle with reading often don't get that diagnosis at all, or only when it's too late. And I really do, as a parent of a child with dyslexia and ADHD, think this is absolutely true. The science shows that effective reading instruction should include an evidence-based multisensory structured language program for many, if not all, of our students. They all benefit from this. Currently, our district has some teachers, special ed teachers, who are certified to teach in these methods, but currently there's no one at Rhodes, Walker, Lincolnwood, Washington, Rice, or Park. There's also some news that there's decisions being made at Dawes that they're transferring teachers with this kind of training to classrooms where they won't be using this specialized training. So, I wanted to encourage the District 65 Board to really take a close look at this. This is really important. Kids come to ETHS, you know, reading, some kids come without reading at a third-grade level. We need to do better. We need to start early, and I encourage you all to take a look at that as hiring and staffing decisions are made this summer. Thank you."
Okay, thank you. So, our next item were items for information and discussion. We have equity initiatives, and I think we're going to have...
Oh, we are in for a treat.
A special treat.
I think, Mr. Winchester, I think what I'll do is introduce you, and you can introduce our panel, and we'll... We'll be ready to learn a lot. How are we doing? Did we, I think we might have made it.
Enough seats for everybody.
So, real quickly, though, Cory Winchester, Mr. Winchester teaches here in the History Department at ETHS but is the noted esteemed advisor and leader of our SOAR program, and Cory, I'll turn it over to you, and you can introduce our students.
Thank you, everybody. I'm really humbled to be here. Leader is an interesting word for that because I just feel like I work with all of our young folks, but our presentation tonight is going to talk about our equity initiatives. So, we're going to discuss what happened with our collaboration with the King Arts, and actually, Ally Greby is going to talk a lot about that first, and then we're going to, the students are going to talk about all the equity updates that are happening here at ETHS.
All right, so contrary to popular belief, I'm not a student. I am actually the school psychologist at King Arts.
Sounds like you're bragging.
I'm often mistaken even in my own building, so I thought it was worth noting. So, I had the pleasure of interning here a couple of years ago, and I'm missing my partner in crime and colleague, Ms. Haley Gertis, who's a social worker at King Arts. She also interned here a couple of years ago, and so we got to take part in all of the amazing summits and some of the SOAR workshops and things that were taking place, and we're really inspiring. So, that stuck with us as we came to work together in District 65, and we started thinking last year about how we could take some of, you know, the same efforts and projects and events going on here and start to embed them into our own district so that our students are having earlier exposure. I've only been there two years, but I've heard other teachers talk about students who come back to visit from ETHS say, "We weren't really prepared to have these conversations, and now we're inundated, and we want to take part," but, you know, it's a lot all at once, and so, starting about last summer, so almost a year ago, Ms. Gertis and I started meeting over the summer to think, "How can we create a summit for King Arts?" And that's when, sort of the school year, we had kind of drafted some ideas and started bringing other people on board. So, we've both been through seed and BD. I went to the Courageous Conversations Conference in Detroit and was intentional about the sessions I chose to sort of see what other districts were doing in the same vein, things that they had learned. I saw a presentation by Pat, which was really helpful in our planning stages, so thank you, Pat. And we started bringing in, you know, Cory Wallace, different leaders in equity in our district, Trish Baker, Pat Anderson, different people throughout the district to really consult with us and make sure we were being intentional and inclusive, and then we partnered with these incredible SOAR students because the messaging is always going to be a little more powerful, I think, coming from these incredible students, and we've seen the work that they do and the impact they have, so no one does it better. So, we were consulting with them and our own committee, and after about eight months of planning and some pre-work with our own staff, which included microaggression training, we did some implicit bias training and discussions, we did some multicultural identity work with our students in class, just so we weren't doing this sort of like pop-up equity, all of a sudden it's here and then it's gone. So, we were intentional about building that and also, you know, kind of planning with SOAR students to know, what did they want to know when they were in middle school? What are the things they felt they missed? What would have been really impactful at that time? So, they've been amazing. And then on March 7th, we had a half-day, and our seventh and eighth graders participated in the first-ever racial equity summit at District 65. So, we had the students do a lot of work with, you know, staying engaged, doing the agreements, reviewing the compass, so that our students had some language and some baseline guidelines to kind of follow as we entered into some of these tough discussions. We watched a really incredible TED Talk I would recommend to anyone called "What Beyonce Taught Me About Race." It's very powerful if you haven't seen it, and then did some processing activities. We gave the students some tools so that they had basic language and were able to talk about this, and then we broke down into small groups, and we had our SOAR students co-facilitate with some adult facilitators who had been through similar equity trainings, and we worked on different things, just kind of whatever came up in conversation, but also focusing on microaggressions. Did that for a little over an hour, came back, we had our students debrief, they were able to ask the SOAR students any questions that they had, ask about ways to get involved for our eighth graders who were coming here next year, and we had them complete an exit slip also to talk about their experiences for the day, and we've synthesized that data. One of the really incredible things that came out of it was almost half of the students, we had 108 students there, there was an option for parents to opt students out, no one opted out, which was really exciting, and 43% of our students said it was the first time they'd ever had conversations about race at school with their friends and their peers. And then, another item of note was, we gave them some different ways to kind of express what their experience was that day and kind of define it, and the most popular was educational. 82% of them said it was educational, 54% said memorable, 50% said necessary. Those were the top three remarks from our students. We've had a lot of positive feedback sense, a lot of, "Can we do it next year? Are the SOAR students coming back? How do we get involved?" And so, we've been working really hard to make sure that this is something that can stay at King Arts, maintain a partnership with these incredible students moving forward, and hopefully expand the initiative to other schools in the district.
So, I actually think it would be a great pause here so that the students can introduce themselves and talk about their participation in the King Arts Summit if they did, and then also understanding that the group of five students that are here before today are part of a larger group of students who really coordinate and collaborate to do this work.
Hi, I'm Julia. I'm a junior at ETHS. I use she/her's.
I'm Snowvia Aiden. I'm a senior here at ETHS. I also use she/her/hers.
I'm Amalia. I'm a senior, and I use she/her/hers pronouns.
Hi, I'm Joe. Joe Blanchard, for those who know my family. My pronouns are he/him/his.
I'm Quinn Hughes. I'm a freshman. My pronouns are he/him/his.
So, do any of you want to talk about your experience at the conference? Or as part of the planning stages, what was that like working, like with the adults to put this initiative together?
I can talk first, I guess. Yeah, so, right out the gate, when we were kind of approached by the King Arts people, we had a lot of enthusiasm because one regret that we have onboard is that we feel like we never get to access people in lower grades, and for me especially, I started getting involved in SOAR when I was just a junior, and that's a lot of growth, that's a lot of thinking, and that's a lot of impact that I can have in my community that starts so late and therefore is still kind of stunted. And so, when we were approached with this opportunity to kind of increase our influence but have it taken a different direction that could still reach these kids in a great way, yeah, it was wonderful. So, we had a few lunch meetings, where we talked and brainstormed, shared agendas. Yeah, and it got, things started from there, and no one else wanted to.
Does anyone want to share anything about, like, the small group dialogues that you had with some of the students and what that was like?
Yeah, I think, I feel like a common, like, idea is that kids, like, aren't able to talk about race or racism, which is just like not true at all, and it was very telling, like, when in small groups, like, kids were really ready to talk about racism and race and their experiences within King Arts, and they would talk about their experiences that they had in the school or outside of the school, and a lot of them, it felt like they were kind of just like going on and on because they had no other spaces to talk about it or no other people to talk about it with, which was kind of sad, but also, we got a lot of comments about, like, how they were so excited to talk about it, and a lot of students of color were really excited also because they were like, "We never were given the space to do this," and like, it was really, like, relieving to them, which was amazing, and like, anytime, like, that space is provided, I think it should continue, and like, regardless of anything, it should continue and give students the space, especially young students the space, because racism isn't going to stop, and the idea of racism isn't going to stop the moment they step into the high school, if not, it's kind of a blow to the face in the high school, especially because you're with so many people and so many different people.
Yeah. Just like bouncing off of that, I didn't go to a, I didn't go, I went to a private school, and so, I came from a small private school, went to Carolina, went to SOAR, and I definitely could have benefited from having that space, like, me being the only black student in a very predominantly white institution, just like, being able to talk with older students with, to older, like, students of color about their experiences and how they, like, at the playground when somebody said this to them about speaking too wide, or like, students, as Snowvia said, we were both in the same group, where it seemed like students were just going on and on, but they just needed that space to vent, and so that was just a very, like, beautiful thing to watch. And so that was just a very, like, beautiful thing to watch.
Yeah, I agree with a, a lot with what my colleagues have said about students needing to talk about these, these topics. And I was in eighth grade last year. And I think one thing that stood out to me is that students will have these conversations almost no matter what. It just depends in what space they have the conversations. And so I know at Nichols, there is limited time and space for talks of race to be had in the classroom just because the curriculum is so dense and it moves so quickly. So then these conversations were often forced to be had either through, through social media, on phones, or in the playground in an environment that's not really monitored in any way, shape, or form. And so from the perspective of a, a student of color, they often led in kind of violent language or hurt feelings or vicious words amongst students based on either miseducation or things that were fed through media and things like that. So I think that it, the importance of these conversations with the young students is that it allows them to kind of have one baseline understanding of the topics and then to be able to use that information in their own lives.
So, like on my end, it was a really great experience to see the students lead that work with the, the King Arts collaborators. And I think this is a really great example of the, the type of energies and efforts that we need to be making across districts. And we, we definitely need to be more intentional about the work as, as it happens. So I think this is a really great start to some future programming between both districts.
Yeah, no, I agree. We've, we've already been soliciting the SOAR students for, to see if they'd be interested in doing this next year. I know there's a lot of graduates. So I'm, I have no doubt that the group will be replenished and we'll be working with some new and old awesome students again next year. Hopefully a little earlier in the year. I think the goal is to put this half-day on sometime next fall or winter. So, King Arts looks forward to the continued collaboration and having another successful summit.
So at this point in time, the students are gonna walk you through a little bit of what the experience is like and update you all about the equity initiatives that they have been leading.
Okay, so we're gonna start off talking about basically, and we'll make this quick, the goals and purpose of SOAR, which if you did not know stands for Students Organized Against Racism. We are a group that's centered around creating spaces for courageous conversations centered around race. And we use some more academic texts that give us kind of a framework for it, PEG and the kind of the Beyond Diversity setup. That's a lot of what we draw from for our conferences. And going along with courageous conversations, interracial dialogue, interracial consciousness. And this is all peer-to-peer, like, conversations between where people are calling in each other, calling out each other in different terms like that. Yeah, and even beyond just learning and development, it's about empowering students in their identities and what they can do at ETHS, which is where you see those, the last two points tonight, my favorite is to develop leadership.
So the structure of SOAR is, it's coordinated by students, but our sponsor is Mr. Winchester. And what we do is we plan activities within the school. And I think something like we're most known for is our two conferences. But within SOAR, we have a multitude of like committees that we kind of, that's kind of like the inside workings of SOAR. And I personally really like, those are the ones that create like most of the change within ETHS. And basically, like, what we're here for is to like advocate for students in all of their identities, specifically racial identities.
So for the SOAR programming, we have our committees as well as our conferences. So we have our fall conferences, which is ETHS students only. And then we open that up to other schools in our winter conference. And this year we expanded on the amount of new schools that came in, so that was really cool. Getting those different perspectives and providing spaces for these different people. And then within our committees, we have MCAN, Equity Zones, the Alliance, and Equity Workshops.
So here we have an overview of the, of our SOAR conferences. So we talk a lot about privilege, we talk about microaggressions. We also discuss intersectionality, but our main, so we also have, so we have our courageous conversation protocol. So we have our compass, where we plan our different activities. And this is just a way for our students to talk about how they're feeling or like discuss different ways to make change within their own communities. We have our agreements and our conditions. And then within our winter conference, like Julia mentioned, we had many other schools there. So we had, as you can see, all, I won't list them all, but we had many different districts there. We had like New Trier, Niles West, we had middle school students, like Baker Demonstration came. And then we also have a partnership with Northwestern, and so they helped us, helped us out a lot. We have our conference at Northwestern. So one of our programs is MCAN, which stands for Minority Student Achievement Network. So this fall, we had our, we had a MCAN conference in Cleveland, Ohio, where a few students flew out there. MCAN is a national program, so we met with other students who are a part of MCAN. And we just discussed the education gap within our own schools and different ways that we can combat that. So we all came together, us like SOAR students, and we came up with different, we first identified the major problems within our school was education. And then we came up with different solutions for that. And then we also have our, huh? We also had our ment, we also have a mentoring program where it was, it took front this year mostly, where students were sophomore, I believe sophomore and freshmen were paired together and juniors and seniors are paired together. And it was for students of color. And so this is a way that we could reach out to younger students like we talked about. And just give, we, one, one thing we noticed was there's a lot of lack of generational knowledge between students of color. So we can say like, like for college applications, like your parents could have gone through something or like your older sibling could have. But if you don't have that, if you don't have that experience at home, it's a whole, like, the college process could be a whole different experience for someone. So that's why we pair up juniors and seniors together, so you have almost like an older brother and older sister there to guide you. And then we also have our Kenyan Nonviolence Training, which I can't speak too much about. But I believe that Kenyan Nonviolence, so they talk about restorative justice within schools. They had a training session where I believe a few students went out there a few weeks ago. Sure.
Yeah, so, so one of, one of the students has been really influential and Kenyan is not, is not here. But we were approached by Gail Schecter, Mary Lou Finley, Sherry Bevel, and Pam Smith. And they all were individuals in two thousand sixteen who came together to put this book out that commemorated the fifty-year anniversary of Dr. King's work in North Lawndale. So they approached us through Corey Wallace, actually, because they knew about the work that we were doing and that they were interested in bringing some of the restorative justice practices here through Dr. King's Principles of Nonviolence. So two years ago, our MCAN, like, delegation decided that that's something that we wanted to put front and center. And this year we really tried to enhance the initiatives. Kai Gerberich, who's a senior, was really influential in, in doing that and working closely with Dr. Robinson and the disciplinary committee to try to talk about how we can institutionalize Kenyan principles. Jude actually works over at North Lawndale, and that's where we have been getting a lot of inspiration from for how we can enhance, you know, what Kenyan is. You know, when North Lawndale instituted Kenyan Nonviolence, their disciplinary and suspensions dropped significantly. There was a way that students were able to, like, address a lot of the issues that they had. And we feel that, you know, at ETHS, in the Evanson community, like, we're experiencing violence in so many ways. Maybe not physical, but not, not just physical, but, you know, emotional, mental, right? So we wanted to bring that in. So that's a little bit about the update for Kenyan.
So, one of the other committees we have is Equity Zones. And so within this committee, we try to help facilitate or provide spaces for students to nominate their teachers or any staff member if they feel like they provide a safe space regarding to their identities. And so within that, kids are able to, our students are able to nominate their teachers through a Google form and also staff members, any staff member. And through that, they will be designated, either if that's like a sticker by their door or if they're marked with it some other way. Any student can go up and feel like that other students have nominated this person to be a safe space for them and provide good conversations. And so that's one of our committees.
So the Alliance, I think, is one of our, like, most restorative justice practices within SOAR. And basically what the Alliance tries to do is like minimize the amount of like power structure between like a staff member and a student. Because oftentimes when like something problematic or like racially charged happens in a classroom, students don't often feel comfortable like going to that teacher because of the power structure within institutions themselves. So if something like racially charged happens within a classroom or within the school with another teacher, staff member, a student's able to come to SOAR. And within that, we have social workers and other staff members within ETHS who've had C training, while, and also other SOAR Board members who would sit down and help facilitate a conversation between that student and that staff member that had the issue to help work that out without feeling like, without the student feeling like their voice was lost within that conversation. So SOAR Leadership Board, SOAR Leadership Board. So students apply for SOAR after our winter conference. And after the nominations come through, we have a selection process. And then within that, we have an onboard transition meeting to help, because this is heavy work and like you can't really get this work done without trust. So our first con, transition meeting is just like us getting to know each other, like our stories, our personal work. And then after that, we have another meeting where it's the more logistics stuff, where we talk about committees and like get people signed up for like our technology. So each peop, so SOAR Board is like a huge group of students, but within that, like, e- each group of students work for a specific committee. And everyone helps facilitate the SOAR conferences and participate in like community events like this and other staff trainings. Like, in the beginning of the year, is it, I don't know what it's called, but we help, we talk, we have a panel and we talk to like new incoming staff members at ETHS and like tell them about like the racial climate in ETHS and our experiences as students.
Yeah, so twenty eighteen was a fairly busy year for us and we got a lot done. We already discussed MCAN, in which we brought back some new plans for, which Amalia already discussed. We had both of our conferences, which hosted over, I think, hundred thirty students both times, somewhere around there. Which is great, by the way. We had our mentorship program really get off the ground this year. We saw a lot of growth of that and a lot of positive feedback. Another project that MCAN actually took over is, anyone wanna, the access sheet?
Oh, yeah, so a part of MCAN's work this year included the, what we call the cheat sheet for incoming freshmen to the high school. And so what we spoke on a little bit earlier is kind of the knowledge gap as to how to access different educational services in the high school, particularly pertaining to more challenging or more accelerated classes and college readiness. And so we noticed that there was sort of a need for some of the insider knowledge that helps navigate some of these institutions within the high school. And so what we developed was a cheat sheet that we've handed out at different freshman orientation events, particularly for students of color coming into the high school, to help readiness for courses. So that looks like showing, breaking down who students can talk to for either academic or emotional support, whether that's counselors or in, projects like Wildcat Academy, things like that. And then it also includes different agencies at the high school that help for college readiness or SAT testing or SAT tutoring, things of that nature.
And the, the freshman cheat sheet was not just focused on college access, but really the whole gamut of experiences. One thing that we realized is that, like, we all have different trajectories and that's something that we wanted to, you know, highlight, so that we didn't create a singular narrative about what success looks like at ETHS.
And then we had our beautiful King Arts or conference. Hoping that we can expand that next year into other District sixty-five schools.
That's it.
Thank you so much. It's always great to see the SOAR students come to Board members, hear you speak. I always often hear of you and the great work you're doing in our community and in surrounding districts. You are truly a model for what equity looks like in schools. We can do the work as staff, we can do the work as a board, but when we see it in our students, that's when we realize what we're doing really is making a difference. So I really have to say that I am so proud of you. It's great. It's really great to see you here. So I'll open it up to the Board. If anybody has questions you'd like to ask this amazing panel, feel free.
I have a question. The last comment or aspiration you mentioned, and that's expanding it to other schools, right? Am I wrong?
You're blinking.
Oh, I'm blinking.
It's blinking, William.
There we go. There we go, we got, got a microphone's around. Is there a plan? Is there a plan to expand it beyond what's happening at King Arts or are we with that?
I think we are gonna talk about that a lot th- this upcoming year. I think that with King Arts, we kinda were able to have a resource to come to us and kind of initiate those conversations. But I think next year, we really wanna try to get into like shoot middle school and things like that, where we have people from, that are coming onto the SOAR Board, who have connections within that, that will help talk to like principals and things like that to see where they're at and how we can help our, maybe if they wanna facilitate a conference, if we can help them with that.
I can comment on that too a little bit, because that's been something our Planning Committee has been talking about since our initial Equity Summit. And my colleague and I did meet with all the principals in the district to kind of debrief on how the summit went, things that arose as challenges and what went well, what we might change. I think what's, you know, unique about King Arts is we're a magnet school, so we're working with a smaller number of students. And we were also very intentional about the staffing that was done. So making sure all of our facilitators, everyone who was involved in creating the day had been through a number of trainings prior to sort of helping to put those things together, even though all of our staff members were involved. So the teachers, I had failed to mention earlier, were involved in those discussions but sort of as participants and not as facilitators. So it's something we're thinking about. We have a great template that we are happy to share and have shared. But it would look like assembling bigger teams at those other schools and identifying a great deal more staff members to be able to put that on. But we had a lot of good energy at that meeting and a lot of interest. And again, as long as SOAR is interested, there's a lot of enthusiasm around it. So there are, there are discussions.
So I wanted to comment, again, thank, thank you for all the work that you do. And, you know, having grown up as, you know, a student from a marginalized community in Chicago, and I really wish, you know, a student group like you was around to help guide me when I was younger. And it's just so incredible to, to hear your voice and to go through some of this work that's so difficult, right? I mean, it's, thi- thi- this isn't easy work at all. It's very difficult and painful. But, you know, hearing you and he- hearing the initiative that you're taking, your intentionality is, is very inspiring to me. You know, the Board, and, you know, I've expressed this with my, my colleagues at District sixty-five, you know, we're really interested in elevating student voice within District sixty-five to help inform our decision-making. So I would love to sit down with, with all of you to maybe engage. I know I reached out earlier this month or last month to our student councils. And again, those are kiddos from, you know, our middle schools as well as elementary schools. I think, you know, the, i- it's possible to have these types of conversations with kids at all age levels in a developmentally appropriate way, so that we start earlier. And, and kids can, you know, have that experience, right? And, and who better to do it than, than yourselves as students, right? Because they look up to you guys. And so, again, I'd be interested in chat, chatting with you after, after this meeting to kind of engage student voice in District sixty-five. uh student voice in District sixty-five. And uh, again, thank you for, again, setting the foundation uh to do that uh through some of the conferences as well as that you have had, you've had at uh King. Uh, and last year there was a shoot, right? I mean, I know there was a conference at, at another middle school. So, but you know, again, thank you for all the work that you do on behalf of our community.
Dr. Gorin?
But I just wanted to also uh thank you guys. I uh got an opportunity to sit in the auditorium uh for one of the opening sessions and watch you and your colleagues um really express such fantastic leadership. Um, and it was great to sort of be sitting in the auditorium and watch um the, the kids from King look up at you and really engage. And if we know middle school students, we know that they can be all over the place. They were focused. They were focused, they were intentional. Um, and that, that says a lot about your commitment and how you were facilitators of that dialogue. And so I, I just wanna pat you all on the back and the whole SOAR organization. Um, and if we can figure out ways, I mean, there's some logistics that we're gonna have to do. Uh, but if we could uh continue to do that sort of work where you as young leaders are helping younger leaders and potential leaders really evolve, um, it's a happy day. And so I just wanna thank you very much for the leadership that you put forth uh and uh the help that you uh provided for our kids at uh King Arts.
Alright.
I have a question, actually. Um, I wanna echo the thank you um for, for uh sharing your leadership and your expertise and your thoughts with um, with our students at King Arts. I wanted to ask a little bit more about um the preparation for that day. Because I know you mentioned that, um, and uh one of the students mentioned too, that there's not a lot of time within the classroom instructional day to have these conversations, but you did find a way to give some, to allow some space for those conversations so that they weren't just all of a sudden presented at the summit in March with um, with all of these discussions. So how did you navigate that?
Yeah, so um that was a discussion with our planning committee, because we all had the same idea that this is gonna be, you know, kind of chaotic if it's just sprung on our students. And so um East Malice was really uh helpful, because she had an activity that she had used before. That was the multicultural identity, or what is it? The multicultural circles of self. Um, so our social worker was able to go into each seventh and eighth grade class um ahead of the half day and just talk a little bit about what summit was gonna be like, some general ideas of what we would be doing. And then the second half was a lesson where really getting students to start to think about identity. What makes up your identity? What, you know, defines you? How do you define yourself? What are the most important um identities to you? And there's kind of an artistic, hands-on aspect of that where students work with tinfoil to kind of mold and shape something that's representative of how they, you know, identify themselves. Um, and then, you know, we were hearing from staff earlier in the year, as this idea was sort of in its inception, these conversations are coming up and we don't really know what to say. So it was also about providing basic language with our staff, um, using staff meeting time to talk about not only what summit was gonna be like, but um we did, again, a staff-led training on microaggressions, which mirrored a lot of the um lessons and discussions that we did in our small group breakouts on that day. So staff already had a little bit of um familiarity. We did some implicit bias, um, sorts of trainings and discussions at our staff meetings as well. Um, and then with our students after summit, because, you know, they were excited and they were expressing a wa- a desire for continuity, we anticipated that. Um, so we actually just hosted Activism Week uh at the end of April, which was another labor of my incredible colleague, Ms. Curtis. Um, and I have a few notes on that. So this took place last week of April. Monday was Make a Pledge Day. Um, so students had a chance to give a pledge, you know, something that they wanted to do to help make the world a better place. Um, Tuesday was honoring an activist, so we had a gallery walk with different activists and our students engaged in discussions about those activists. Um, Wednesday was What Do You Stand For? So they watched a video by Kid President and talked about topics that motivate them to make a difference. And then that Thursday was Stand Against Racism. So um students had the opportunity to discuss the meaning and the importance of standing against racism. And uh that final day was Day of Silence. So participating in different ways of, you know, showing support for the LGBTQ community if, if students opted to do that. So we've had a lot of continued discussions. Um, you know, we hear, we overhear the discussions more in the hallways now. Students were excited by this. And um for me, it was really interesting that in some of our small group dialogues, the students I'd never heard talk in two years um were some of the most vocal, so it really did provide, I think, an outlet for some of the students that hadn't necessarily had opportunities like that before. Um, and I'm happy to, you know, I brought feedback from our students that was synthesized from those exit slips, if anyone is interested, and that has some more commentary from them about what they want and how they felt about the experience, but.
And then this was seventh and eighth grade this year.
Seventh and eighth grade, yes.
Is the, is there any intention to try to go into lower grades to, um, or is it gonna be seventh and eighth grade again next year?
Yeah, we haven't discussed that as a possibility, although it, it could be. Um, I think it, we have the staffing to be able to do that at King Arts. Um, one thing we had talked about is, you know, transitioning our templates so that the format is the same for next year, but the discussions are a little bit different and then being able to rotate every year. So our seventh and eighth graders are getting the same content intermittently. Um, but we're not opposed um to going younger and in- including those younger grades, so I think that's definitely up for discussion.
Because I know one thing from our discussion with SOAR, SOAR students last year is when we asked, you know, if there was one thing that you could tell us. Um, there was definitely a, an uh expression of, we wish we had started having these conversations, even in elementary school, you know, at, at younger grades, so that, that it, that would have helped them figure out their identity. And then when they got to high school, it wouldn't have just been, you know, this huge learning curve. So I think if there's an opportunity, um, especially given the smaller size of King Arts, so expanding it to, to younger students um would be great. And then, of course, the, anything to see this expanding at other middle schools would be fantastic too, so thank you again.
Well, thank you again. Thank you for coming and thank you for all your great work. Okay, now we are at item number seven, where we're gonna have a report from the Northwestern Evanston Educational Research Alliance. Dr. Figlio is here with his team. Make sure we have enough chairs. We do? Okay. Okay. Alright, welcome. Alright, uh Dr. Witherspoon, Dr. Gorin, I think you're gonna kick it off for us?
I'll be happy to start and then uh pass it over to, to Eric. Welcome, and uh this is a really exciting evening for all of us as we uh unveil some of the work that we're doing under the NIRA flag, the Northwestern Evanston Education Research Alliance. Let me start with a couple quick comments. One, uh, this is such important and exciting work because it changes the paradigm of what research, um, uh, research about education should be about. And with all respect to our colleagues from uh institutions of higher education and from Northwestern, typically, stereotypically, research is done on school systems. And uh there's important funding and important questions that are then asked and then um uh folks pop in, they get data, they pop out, they write very good papers, they might be seminal papers, um, and many times we don't see much of it and that's the end of the day. This um opportunity, this partnership is a, a way of shifting that so that the, the issues and the concerns that are being addressed are issues of, they're issues, they're problems, they're problems of practice. They're generated um deeply from the institutions called School District sixty-five and School District two oh two. Um, and then uh in partnership with our esteemed researchers, we really get to dig deeper into um what some of the potential data are, what the solutions are, um, and it really builds a whole new mode of doing, doing research with and for school systems as opposed to on school systems. And so I wanna give um a tremendous amount of credit to our team from Northwestern. Uh, we couldn't do this work without the generous support of uh Spencer Foundation located here in Chicago, the Sebring Lewis Foundation, uh Family Foundation, that's a Evanston-based foundation. Uh, and uh, and again, for recognizing that sort of work. I also wanna just say that, you know, that what, what you are doing as colleagues with us is better uh furthering the partnerships that we have that are represented by this uh horseshoe of a table. That, um, that what our work is, is to try to align the work that goes on between District sixty-five and District two oh two. And the one way to do that is to generate data and information and analysis, so we can have a better sense of where we are and where we're going. And indeed, what you'll be presenting tonight, um, will be able to give us some of that sense in its earliest stages. And I wanna underscore that. I think uh as colleagues, we will all underscore this, that this is a work in progress. Um, it will take time to have all the data, to fill in all the data points and uh, and to build the infrastructure. But when we build the infrastructure, it will be second to none around this country in terms of the type of work that we're doing in Alliance. One uh more final note, uh, you know, the nearer partnership, the work that we do with our colleagues is grounded in our commitment to racial equity. And uh we wanna always emphasize that when students are not performing or when we see data that um, that we have, uh, that the responsibility, um, and any sort of failure is a failure on the, of the system, not of the student. And that the data that we use may identify gaps, they may um, uh, in, 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 in doing that, many times data are used to justify gaps, used to justify institutional racism. And um our commitment is to acknowledge the strength and the really important focus that our students have when they come to our districts and then to use the information to make their experiences better. So I, I salute you all as you jump in and I will salute my colleague Eric as you jump in as well.
Thank you, Paul. So from our perspective, we're just really thrilled with this partnership and that we can combine our data and we have uh the um, the power of anal- analysis that Northwestern University can provide to really start to give us the answers uh to the um, uh, the, the, the questions, the problems of practice that we're trying to get, to dig into more. Um, we, we definitely know that, that it's important to have our students uh college and career ready. Uh, we also know that uh over the, for many years, we've um been able to measure college acceptance. We find out where the kids have been accepted and we've uh are, are, are able to, uh, you know, talk about our uh post-secondary attendance rate. Uh, it's only been in recent years that we now have a national clearinghouse, which also helps us uh keep uh a, a track of what happens to students after they leave uh the high school and are admitted into college. And what, we certainly know that while admission is, is important, uh, that to and through uh is really most important. That is, not only going to college, but getting through college. Uh, and um, uh, we worked with Dr. Figlio to really find out, you know, um, what, wh- where can we start to get a handle on? Uh, you know, are students really um entering college and persisting in order to, to make it through college? And we looked at, at, at um a, a lot of data and uh, and research. And, and it seems that, that a really good predictor of getting through college is five consecutive semesters of persistence when you get to college. And quite frankly, we at the high school aren't sure how much our influence matters after five semesters off to college. There are a lot of other life experiences going on uh in, in college. But, but can we be making the preparation K through twelve so that our students are equipped to not only get into college, but to be persisting and, and certainly being there through five consecutive semesters to, to be um, uh, we think by then uh more predictive of graduating from college? And so what we're trying to do is create a multiple measure here within the two districts so that we have a better idea of what are, what are the indicators, the predictors, the preparation that students seem to have, the ones who are indeed persisting through five semesters once they get to college? And so one of the things that we're really very interested in is that post-secondary outcome. We're very interested in creating a multiple measures index. That is, let's backtrack from those five consecutive semesters. Let's start backtracking and let's see if we can find the multiple measures that are the indices of what was going on with individual young people so that, so that, that they are indeed persisting in college. And then we, in the two districts, can use those multiple points to start to work with individual students. And that's what's so good about this. This is, you know, when Paul said, we're gonna have something like, like, it's amazing. It is gonna be amazing, because I, we don't know of any other district. If, by the way, once we get it, Dr. Figlio, we don't know, we don't know of any other district that has been able to ma- back map these kinds of, of multiple indices all the way back to who knows what we'll find. Maybe kindergarten, first grade, maybe third grade up, whatever it is, that, that, that give us the information that we need. So now we can look at individual students and realize where we can be providing the support and, and, and the additional rigor and the additional uh support so that they are indeed preparing to someday, in their post-secondary experience, persist and graduate from college. So that's what we're excited about. What you have before you tonight, and they're, they're going to launch into this in about two minutes here, um, uh, is a beginning. Because they're not gonna give you those indices yet tonight. We don't have them. But I'm hoping in the coming months, we start, we start getting some of them. We need them. And, and, and we need to build off of the, this massive database so that we can start to identify where our work needs to be occurring. And with that, I introduce you to the esteemed, the nationally world-renowned, by the way, I'm not kidding on that, Dean of the s- uh, the s- uh, the School of uh Education and Social Policy, Dr. David Figlio.
Thank you for that overly kind introduction, Eric. Um, um, so I just wanna say a few words to uh launch, uh, to launch the presentation. The first thing I'll men- I'll, I'll uh mention just is the um, uh, that I, my aspirations for our school, the School of Education and Social Policy at Northwestern. Um, I've long felt that you, that um doing great research and doing good are not mutually exclusive. And so uh one of the things that we really are feeling very strongly about is that we wanna bring together our research mission, uh, our teaching mission and our service mission uh in the service of our hometowns. And so um, uh, we're, through that, we're really uh investing as much energy as we can in helping to ensure um, uh, that learning, human development, thriving uh in Evanston and Chicago are as um, as great as, as we can. And so our goal for our school is to be the catalyst through which Northwestern, uh, we're going to be able to connect Northwestern uh, uh, researchers, students in, through to the community in this kind of space. Um, we, to that end, we've launched our Office of Community Education Partnerships. And um, uh, that's co-led by uh Amy Pinkard. I, I'm combining the two. Amy Pratt and Nicole Pinkard. See, they really are the dynamic duo. I look at the two of them and they're just blended into a two-headed, a two-headed hunter. Exactly. So Amy Pratt is our assist- Assistant Dean for, I've been up for a long time. Amy Pratt's our Assistant Dean for Community Education Partnerships. Nicole Pinkard is our um Faculty Director of the Office of Community Education Partnerships. And they really are the dynamic duo um who have been working to, uh, working tirelessly to help to um build the mechanisms through which we're going to be able to connect as much of Northwestern. of Northwestern together with, with Evanston and with Chicago. And for me, this is really personal, because I think that my career has actually been evidence that, that, that great research can be done in collaboration with, with experts in school systems. To this day, my most cited research paper in my career is a joint, is joint research with somebody, with a school district official at Alachua County Public Schools in Gainesville, Florida, where I worked for 10 years before coming here. And it was published in the most prominent journal in the economics profession, and so, and it dramatically changed education practice in Gainesville, Florida. So when I look at that, I think that it's possible to do work that is going to do dramatic good for education practice in one's hometown, and also do the types of things that top uni- some of the top universities in the world think are also important, like publishing field-changing research projects. You're not going to hear about field-changing research tonight, however, you are going to hear about a true collaboration that, between the two school systems and Northwestern, which I think is, I think typifying the new objectives that we have, that I think the two school systems and Northwestern really want to move forward with it through NERA, the Northwestern-Evanston Education Research Alliance. I want to also shout out the two foundations that made this possible, and Paul mentioned it as well, the Lewis Sebring Family Foundation, I think Chuck is in the audience, yes, Chuck, thank you. Lewis Sebring Family Foundation and the Spencer Foundation. The work that we're doing here, that you're going to be hea- hearing, here, we were able to do in one year with funding from Spencer and Lewis Sebring, which probably would have taken five years had we not had that funding. And ultimately, I think that what we fully expect by this time next year is that, that Eric was talking about, is something that could be very actionable and practicable, and that might have taken 10 years had it not been. So the notion here is, thanks to the generous support of, of, of our friends at Spencer Foundation, Lewis Sebring Foundation, we were able to leverage all, both school districts at Northwestern to do this work in a manner that, again, can be done much more timely. So you lied when he said two minutes, but I was going to spend now two minutes to say again, what's the goal of NERA, Northwestern-Evanston Education Research Alliance? This is a portion of, of our schools' goals for the Community Education Partnerships. So one, and I'm actually going to say that, so, so when we see, the first thing is design and implement research that benefits Evanston schools. And as I mentioned, we can, I'd like to think about the first point and the fourth point simultaneously. Our goal here is to carry out research that's in for, that's in collaboration with the experts in Evanston schools and both school systems. Our long-term aspiration is to, is to develop this further with other leading organizations, such as the McGraw-Y, and, and other leading organizations in Evanston as well. So that's, that's our, that's our, our deep aspiration, is to really build the, build the research and data exoskeleton for, for Evanston, that, in ways that are going to be able to provide just-in-time research for school systems, the Y, et cetera, to, to make, to address problems in practice, while simultaneously generating field-leading research, the type of thing that will serve Northwestern's, Northwestern's aspirations as well. And that could only happen through strong collaborative, mutually beneficial partnerships in research and practice. What you're going to hear tonight is what Eric was mentioning, which is a first of its kind anywhere in the country, that we're attempting to do, which is bringing together through the expertise of both school systems and Northwestern, what seems, what might seem to the uninitiated to be a pretty simple idea, but actually is enormously complicated. By the way, this is a good opportunity to introduce to, to the other two people at this table, even though I'm not going to hand the mic over to you yet. So I'm not going to combine Lila and Love's names, but we have Lila Goldstein and Love Morgan. And Lila and Love have been working together. They're basically the statistical powerhouse embedded within, embedded within Northwestern to complement the statistical team in District 65 and District 202, who are working together to build, build this. And so the way this is working is that the various statistical experts and data experts in the two districts, Lila and Love, have been working together, working together to, to carry this out, and periodically, they dip back to talk with other folks within the districts and within Northwestern to see us moving along. So the goal here, as you can see with this gra- this, this picture, is we're interested in looking to see what happens over the course of a, a young person's life. Can we predict, as Eric was mentioning, can we predict at various, various times in people's lives, maybe, you know, first grade, second grade, third grade, all the way up through 12th grade, what is predicting college success? And again, college success in this case is, we're looking at, you know, attending and persisting in college. And so in, in a fully formed world, our aspiration is to generate something that you can see at any given point through a person's career. Are they on track? And are there potential levers that might be, might be addressable? And so you can see how this is going to then stimulate, stimulate collaborative research in the service of improving Evanston schools. Because suppose what we end up doing is finding out, for example, that in sixth grade, there are certain indicators that suggest a student is, is falling off of track to be prepared to be successful in college. Now you may think, okay, if we just fix that indicator, that's going to solve the problem. But that's not true, because that indicator is just, as the name suggests, an indicator, right? So then the notion becomes, okay, well, what are things that we might be able to do at that particular ca- at that particular place, that might be able to help to make sure by seventh grade, that person is achieving the indicators that look like they're back on track in a lot of regards? Well, that's where you want to get the subject area experts within, in that case, District 65, together with the subject area experts at Northwestern, together with evaluation experts using data to help to generate testable hypotheses that could turn into practicable potential solutions that might be implemented, implemented in school systems, to see whether or not that actually makes a difference. And that's the type of collaboration that we have in mind, this notion of trying to do this in a just, just-in-time way, so you don't have to wait generations to make the incremental steps that often take place. So what, there are a couple of ways that we're actually going to do this with infrastructure. So what you're going to see here is, is with this schematic, is this notion of taking a look at various, at various grades, trying to predict post-secondary outcomes. And, and what you'll be here, where we're, where we're starting out with is ninth grade and eighth grade. So looking at, are there, are there some measures, what do we see in ninth grade that predicts post-secondary outcomes? What do we see in eighth grade, the last year of District 65, that's predicting post-secondary outcomes? And then the goal from that, moving forward, is to start to fill in the other grades. And this is where it's going to become really interesting and important, because as you can imagine, the farther back you go in time, back into earlier grades, the farther and farther away you are to today's reality. Because in order to study things predicting post-secondary outcomes, you have to be able to, you have to be able to, at that point, you know, have, for the same children, post-secondary outcomes, and early, you know, elementary or middle school data. And so the second thing that Lila's going to be telling you about is some other things that we're going to be doing, that once we feel like we have high fidelity predictors from high school, is we're going to try out doing things like what middle school da- what middle school indicators predict high school on track, so that, so that, and then we have, so that we can start to bring some of the middle school data a little more current as well. So this is a little bit of the complexity that Eric was talking about with regard to, we don't have all, we don't have all the data yet, we don't have all the, all the answers yet. This is very much an iterative process between experts in each of the three institutions. But, but I'm really happy about where we are. As I mentioned, I think we managed to do five years, what would have happened in five years, managed to do in, in one year, and that couldn't have happened without, again, teamwork between the institutions combined with the philanthropic support of generous supporters. So with that, I think I want to hand the microphone and the clicker off to my colleague, Lila.
Thank you, David, and thank you to both of these boards for allowing us to come speak with you today. We hope that this gives you a little insight into where we are in this project. So throughout the rest of this presentation, we're basically going to address three things. We'll give you a little bit more information about where we are and the progress that we've made so far and what we're building on. We'll walk you through the work that we're doing right now, so looking at student progressions and the building blocks for these formulas that will get us indicators, and then we will address where we're going from there. Which way does this point? There we go. So, a little bit about our progress. We are trying to apply, thank you, lessons learned from previous research to the Evanston context. Specifically, the consortium at University of Chicago has done a lot of great work with Chicago Public Schools to figure out indices of high school graduation. This is a very different context here, but we've built a lot on the methods that they used and learned from the ways that they've done that work. In order to do this work, we first needed to agree on an outcome, and that's what Eric and David have been talking about with college persistence. They have done a lot of work, all, both districts and Northwestern did a lot of work before I was hired, to finalize a data sharing agreement that would allow us to put all of this data together. We've needed to increase capacity both at the districts and at Northwestern, that's when Love and I were hired, develop a project plan, which we worked on this past fall, and we will continue to work on transfer data and start to clean and align the data across districts. Both districts have different sets of students and different ways of doing things, and so the part of the work that we've done so far has just been trying to make sure that we can get a clean and thorough picture of a student's progress from one district to the next and into post-secondary. And so that brings us to where we are now, which is in this preliminary data analysis phase, and giving you guys a little bit of a progress update. We will talk more about what our next steps will be towards the end of this presentation, but just know that we have a lot of analysis in front of us. So, our goals here with this research, we're, we are looking for actionable, trackable factors. So things that the districts can really help students improve, and the sort of low-hanging fruit of data that the district has capacity to collect and maintain. So we're, we're starting with the kinds of things that the district already works with, like attendance and grades, and these aspects of students' academic careers that we really have a chance to act on and to track. And then the goal is to take those factors and figure out how to combine them to give us probabilities of persistence, and think about how we then identify students for support. And so part of this work moving forward will be sort of identifying thresholds. So let's say a student has, students have GPAs, those range anywhere from zero to four, trying to figure out whether we would want to intervene with a student or start to give supports to students who have a three-point or a two-point, that sort of thing systematically, rather than trying to just sort of set a point and hope for the best. So those are our goals here, actionable, trackable factors, and then combining those into formulas that can give us probabilities and identifying thresholds for those factors and formulas. So they've talked a lot about college persistence, just a reminder that here we're talking about five consecutive semesters in a four-year college. You may then think to yourself, there are lots of two-year colleges, that's, that doesn't encompass everybody. We are counting completion of shorter programs in those five semesters as college persistence as well. We are, at least for the moment, we have started with ninth grade, looking at a student's ninth grade year, taking data from that year, and saying, okay, what's, what's happening with these students? And specifically, we're looking at the cohorts of students who completed high school at Evanston Township in 2012 through 2014. That's given them enough of an opportunity to have those five consecutive semesters, so that we can have that outcome data for students. So what is happening with our students? If we start with the ninth graders at ETHS, we see that, you know, for about 11%, we don't know what happens with those students. For the most part, those are students who have moved out of the district. Mobility doesn't allow us to see whether or not they end up graduating. But of those who remain in the district, you see that a high percentage of them end up graduating from Evanston Township High School. And then a high percentage of those graduates end up enrolling in college, we're looking at about 85%. And this brings us back to being really interested in college persistence, because that's where, that's where students aren't necessarily all moving forward the same way. So we see that of the students who enroll in college, about 64% of them appear to persist the way that we have defined this. And that's, that's what makes persistence in college an interesting outcome to look at. If we were only looking at graduation, most of our students are graduating. This is not a place where we're going to have a lot of leverage with students, but what, whatever we can do to help students persist in college is the, going to make a bigger difference in their lives. Additionally, this is where we see equity gaps among students. You can see, and so this sort of mirrors the previous graph. We've got a section looking at black students, a section looking at Latin students, a section looking at white students, and you see that there are, there are gaps between what happens with students after they leave Evanston. And so while we can't necessarily control what is going on in their lives at that point, we can do our best to prepare them before they get there. So I talked a little bit about trackable, actionable factors. This basically boils down to about six things within a student's academic career. We end up looking at grades, so whether a student's getting As or Bs, their progression, whether they've been held back, whether they've, whether they're actually very young for their grade, their course-taking pattern, so whether they are taking algebra or geometry freshman year, that kind of thing. Standardized test scores, so in middle school, that means looking at their MAP scores. In later grades of high school, that will mean looking at ACT and SAT scores. Attendance patterns, whether they are, how many days they're missing, whether they're considered truant and disciplinary incidents. And then when we look at these things, to speak to earlier points about equity, we're making sure that anything that we're picking up as predictive of college persistence is predictable. predictive of college persistence, no matter a student's race, no matter a student's sex, no matter a student's family income, birth country, or home language. We want to be sure that when we use these indicators to predict college success, that we are able to do that for all of our students. So, an obvious starting place would be to look at grades, but as you can see here, you don't get the same predictive power. And this is, this goes back to the complexity issue, is that there are a lot of different ways to measure grades, there are a lot of different ways to, places to look at students' grades. And if you look at them different ways, you get different amounts of information about whether or not they end up persisting in college. So of students who did not get an F in social studies freshman year, it looks like about 65% of them end up persisting. Of those who did, it looks like less than 20% do. But the difference between the no F students and the having gotten an F students in social studies seems to be larger than the difference in math. And this is not to say that social studies has a greater impact on students' ability to persist. It's just that it gives us more information about whether or not they end up persisting Then we start to think about combining different kinds of information to give us a more nuanced picture of what happens with students later. So if you look at this graph, we've basically divided that, that set of ninth graders into four groups. We've got ninth graders who, all the way on the left, who have been absent at least 10 days and have less than a 2.0 in English. And then ninth graders who were absent fewer than 10 days and still had less than a 2.0 in English. And then the group of ninth graders who were absent 10 or more days and had at least a 2.0 in English. And then our final group there is ninth graders who had fewer than 10 absences and at least a 2.0 in English. None of this is surprising. Students who are absent less and have better grades seem to persist in college at a higher rate than students who are absent more and have lower grades. But the important thing that comes of this is that we can start to see how combining things like absences and grades can tell us more subtle information about whether students end up persisting. Similarly, if we look at eighth grade, comparing it to a very preliminary measure of student persistence at ninth grade, and we look at combining different factors there. So this particular graph looks at grades in English and math and whether or not students are meeting college readiness benchmarks on the math portion of the MAP test in eighth grade. We can start to see how, once we're sort of developing this formula, certain factors are giving us more or less information than other factors when, even when we're combining them. So we've combined these factors, we're starting to get a more subtle picture of college persistence. But then we can also see that the grades are tracking more with college persistence than the meeting or not meeting the college readiness benchmarks in eighth grade. However, as we develop these formulas and look at these factors, we need to keep in mind that a formula doesn't tell us how to address students' needs. So even though we come up with these predictions, it's, it's like reporting the chances of rain. It's probabilistic, it's not deterministic, it's not deterministic. So when we come up with, say, a 60% chance of rain in a student's future, it's pretty likely you'd probably want to bring an umbrella, but we don't know for sure that that student isn't going to persist, and we should work our hardest to help them persist. Factors beyond ninth grade obviously impact students' chances of success. We can do as much as we can for students while they are in our good graces, but when they leave Evanston or when they leave high school, there are going to be other factors that play into whether or not they're able to persist. And we can't measure everything about students. We are not Big Brother, and nor should we be, but we will do what we can with what we know about students and their experiences here. With all of this in mind, we need to proceed cautiously with not only how we conduct the research, but also how we then end up using that research. So, moving forward, when we think about the research that we have in front of us, not only are we going to dig deeper into the data that we have for ninth graders, we will also work on predicting persistence from grades 10 through 12, in part to see if there are better points at which to address, predict for students and address their needs. And also because it may be that at 11th or 12th grade, it's looking like having taken X math course is really predictive of student success. So we can then sort of backtrack to ninth grade and say, okay, well, in order to get to that point, what, what does ninth grade need to look like? Then thinking about high school readiness from grades six through eight, starting to do more to connect the data, the great data that we have from District 65 to those indicators that we come up with for high school to see how middle school performance can then help us predict high school probabilities of persisting in college. Hopefully, with all of this groundwork laid, we can then also work on predicting other or related college outcomes. For example, one thing we've discussed is continuing to use our college persistence measure, but tying that in with college type or college tier to see whether we can predict students' success within different kinds of college environments. And from there, as I talked about a little bit earlier, identify thresholds for flagging students for support. That's, that's what this work is all about, is really trying to support students and do the best for them that we can. So with this work underway, we're starting to think about what this work can do. And this, as others mentioned before, this has all been a collaborative, iterative process, and we will continue to work together throughout the research. But one of the areas where, that has really tried to drive how we've been doing this research and the directions that this research is going, is thinking about the ways that we will eventually be able to use this information. And then number one on everybody's plate is addressing students' needs early. We need to start doing that and figuring out what that takes in order to inform instruction and practice and provide feedback for program improvement. And then ultimately be able to, ultimately but not most importantly, be able to monitor high-level trends within the district.
Standing right in your way.
No, no, we're good. So what we wanted everybody here to leave with was the idea that we're, we, NIRA, so the districts together with Northwestern are working to address students' needs early to increase college persistence through this research. And that's going to take the preliminary work that we have done so far for predicting college persistence from middle school and high school, and the work that we are envisioning for ourselves moving forward to figure out how and when to best use this information to help students. That is it for our presentation, but we will happily entertain questions.
I should mention quickly too, that it, even though they're not sitting here at this front table, people like Peter Goddard at District 65 and Carrie Levy at ETHS have been locking arms together with, with the team there to, to produce the work that you've, that you've seen so far.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much to Carrie and Peter.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for the, the information, the presentation. I'm really excited about it, and I am so looking forward to, you said one year?
It's, it's optimistic, but I think, I think, I think we can, I think we can get there.
Okay.
It's, you know, obviously, there's always, when you start digging deeply into data, you start to find things you want to try to figure out. But, but I think, I think we're on, we're on track.
Good.
So to speak.
And we are very optimistic about having actionable indicators by then, even if the work's not 100% complete.
Exactly.
And we're continuing to, to dig in and delve into it and refine it. Yeah, I, I would second what Dr. Pigliio said. I think we can be optimistic that we will have some things that are actionable and we can really be working on.
Right.
At that time.
Right, right. Jonathan?
I find myself torn between two conflicting emotions, gratitude and frustration. I am so grateful to all of you for the work that you're doing, that our staffs of our districts are doing, that the foundations are supporting. But this is so frustrating, that this is so slow. And I understand, this is the fast route, right? You're saying, we're able to do in one year, but it normally takes five years, so now it'll only take us five years instead of 25 years, I guess, to get to where we want to. It's just, you know, we started this process five years ago when the two boards decided to adopt a joint literacy goal and said, you know, we're going to backtrack, we want the kids to be able to read adequately in, in 12th grade, and what does that mean in 10th grade, in 8th grade, in 5th grade, in 3rd grade, in 1st grade? And we, we still never came up with measures, with the, the indicators for the, for the earlier grade levels. And, you know, we, we didn't, you know, it's a tough project. That's why you all, you know, are, the experts are, are so, are so essential. One question I had is, I think you said at some point, Dr. Pigliio, that we don't have all the data yet. What, what was that about?
So I, I think there were a couple, there are, there are a couple of different, so you, there were a couple of different, I think, responses one can have, Jonathan, to. The first, the first is, while it is true that the two districts set these goals, set these goals five, five years ago, the infrastructure really has only been in place just for a heartbeat, right? I mean, we needed to be able to find ways to harmonize data between the two districts to get, to get staffing, get, get this thing staffed up, to build the data sharing agreements. So, so in some regards, it's really been the case that, that to get to all the places where you're being furt, but compliant, you're making sure all of the, that the, the data from District 65 and ETHS are talking to one another, that, that everybody is, really, I mean, all of those things have only been in place since February. So if you start to think about, when you start to think about this, I mean, I think we can actually, we, we, we now are getting to the place where, where all of that early investment that was necessary before you could really accomplish anything has been made. So the first thing I should mention is, is I agree with you, if we're able to, if, if the delta from year to year is, is at the same pace as it's been over the last year, I can't speak for the four prior ones, but over the last year, I think I would share your, your frustration as an Evanstonian and a taxpayer, I would be frustrated as well. Although this is a great ROI for taxpayers, given that as long as we have the combination of Northwestern going and, and devoting some of, a fair amount of our resources and generous philanthropists helping to support this, Evanston's getting a great, Evanston taxpayers are getting a great deal. To answer the second question about all the data being there, I mean, right now, there's, there's, there are data from both districts that have not, never been cleaned before, that you want to go and make sure are actually, you've done the QA QC on them. There are things that, the data that Peter Goddard has had to look at for District 65 have been in great shape because he's been using them. Data that Carrie Levy's been doing in ETHS, it's the same way. But there are other variables that haven't necessarily been, been used in a way that we would, that, that, so they haven't been as, as, as tightened up as, as would be necessary. Or for that matter, we want to get additional years of National Student Clearinghouse data so we can get larger numbers of students, but then that, that takes a bit more, that takes a bit more time. For one thing, people have to age into being able to get more years or be able to go backwards in time. So when we talk about the data not being there, it's just a matter of, of getting District 65 data, ETHS data, talking to one another in ways that they haven't talked to one another historically. And then bringing in National Student Clearinghouse data and making sure that all of the analysts at the various places are, have done all of the quality assurance necessary to make sure that, make sure that, that, that there's not, you know, not, not error, errors aren't driving this, but rather the other. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I guess one of my questions is, because there is this time lag, you know, especially when you look at persistence, because that means you have to have, the cohort has already completed to an half semesters. So it's going to take longer, I imagine, to develop models for some of these formulas, I guess, for some of these predict, predictions than for others. And I wondered if you've given thought to prioritizing measures that you could put together faster? In other words, you see what I'm saying, where you wouldn't need as much data, for example, the, to go from eighth grade to 12th grade, okay? Where you don't need the college persistence data, okay? Maybe we could get some of that sooner, you know, while, while we're sort of waiting for the data to accumulate for the longer-term objectives. Does that work?
Well, I think this is going to be an interesting policy question for, for district leadership and the school boards to talk about, right? As to, I mean, from the point of view of the NIRA partnership, I think it's, it's certainly possible to, it's possible, whatever objective people are interested in is, is important. But as Lila pointed out, one of the things that's so, so, so relevant in the Evanston context, that what, which is different from the Chicago context. In the Chicago context, when the, UChicago Consortium was working together with Chicago Public Schools, they were facing a situation in which one out of every three students didn't graduate from high school. And, or more, I mean, and, and so there, to look at high school graduation being the outcome that they really care about, because it was such a central, salient outcome. In Evanston, nearly all of our students graduate from high school, but there are these later outcomes that really come in. So, so in some regards, the thing, I think, in some regards, I think one of the things that's important to keep in mind is that once we collectively, the two districts and Northwestern, do a lot of this heavy lifting over this next year, by this time next year, I think we'll have a really good sense about things like, at every step along the way, are there things, are there combinations of variables that we know about, which is, I think, the thing you're asking for? Are there combinations of variables we know about that are ultimately going to be predictive of this thing that's very important in Evanston? But in some regards, you have to do all of these things simultaneously in order to get to that place. So this is the place where, again, my sense is, my sense is, because there's going to be this constant conversation, because there has been this constant conversation, I mean, yeah, weekly conversations between, between the Northwestern researchers, the District 65 researchers, the ETH the District 65 researchers, the ETHS researchers. I think, I think throughout the whole, whole process, you know, at various places, the practitioners are going to be saying, "Okay, well here, we have enough information now that we want to be able to do, that we think we can do X." And, and then that's for, that's for the district leadership to, to go and make proposals to their, their school boards at that point, I think.
Well, and the last thing I would highlight is that, as everybody, everybody has emphasized, the ultimate goal is interventions to, to, you know, help kids learn better sooner.
Absolutely.
And one of the things I would think you would want to be on the lookout for is, are some points in, in, in the progression, some years in school, more important than others? In other words, you may discover that, you know, wow, you know, 7th grade is really, is, is, is a big deal. You know, and, and are you look, on the lookout for those kinds of factors?
Absolutely. I mean, this is, frankly, frankly, this is part of the value proposition for Northwestern researchers, right? Because, because the work that Lila was presenting tonight, for example, is really, really, really important for Evanston and is not really, really, really important for Northwestern researchers. However, the core in the realm for Northwestern researchers is finding the breakthroughs. Finding the breakthroughs, which are the places where you're really going to be able to do this. But of course, you know, it's, we can be a little bit glib. I mean, there's, there are, I just came from the American Education Research Association meetings, where there are 18,000 people who've devoted their entire life to answering the question you're asking, Jonathan. And so, so I think for us to say, "Well, maybe if we can figure that out in five years, we'd all win Nobel prizes." My goal, however, is by having this partnership, as Paul was mentioning, that if we can go and take, bring the, through this data infrastructure, through this deep collaboration, not just between the data people, but the, but the program people within the various districts and the relative, and, and the other experts at Northwestern together, that we're going to hopefully be able to supercharge that process in a way that's beneficial for the Evanston, Evanston children and families and also beneficial for research. But, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm, but that's exactly, I mean, that's exactly the goal. I mean, ultimately, if we all just said, "Hey, yep, we've come up with this predictor," and then we all walked home, that would, we'd have a great predictor. But the whole purpose behind this is so that the school districts can try out different things, that Northwestern researchers can help to propose different things, and together, we could get to exactly the point you're talking about, much faster than we've been able to do before.
I just wanted to reiterate, even though I am frustrated, I really am very grateful.
No, I, I know, I'm, I'm, I'm just playing with you.
If I may, I just want to address a little bit of your frustration, because I recognize that. I was reminded today by Maria Allison, who by the way, wrote, really was the primary author of both grants at both foundations, that the work that the Chicago Consortium did, which is different work and is seminal work in the field. I mean, it, it, it shapes a lot of urban public education analysis. Took at least 10 years. And so, again, that's frustrating, given the students who are in our schools right now. On the other side, the building out, Lila actually said it really well, that, you know, we don't want to just sort of guess. We, we can guess and we can do our best guesses. But as we build out this infrastructure, we'll be able to get to where we can be with precision, look at where we, we do interventions and where we pinpoint what we have to do to make improvements for kids. It, it will take time and your push is a good one on what's feasible and what's possible, while staying true to the rigor of the research that we want to do.
Well, Pat. Oh Jude, yes, sorry.
Thank you so much for this groundbreaking work and it has the potential to really move our persistence numbers in college. So, this gets kind of tricky. So first of all, I'd like to ask a clarifying question. So, we're looking at college persistence and trying to improve our outcomes for persistence. So in a sense, we're looking at what a successful student, college student, looks like. And we're backwards mapping. To what extent have we identified success indicators or factors for the college student while they're on that campus? That lead to persistence? For example, there could be non-academic factors, like navigating financial aid, creating a support network without, within that campus, identifying where the academic supports are within that campus. Especially for students who are potential first-generation college grads. Culture shock for students who are entering into a, an environment, a college environment, where people don't look like them. So I'm just wondering, to what extent have we identified some of those success indicators when students get on that college campus? Resiliency, for example, that's another one.
So, I mean, you've again identified something, those are when I'm wearing my other hat as a, as a higher education researcher. And this is, this is the $64,000 question that, that researchers are, researchers, school administrators, now as a dean, I can tell you that we think about that within the Northwestern context all the time as well. I think it's important to think about what can and can't be done with this particular project. So what you're describing, of course, are absolutely essential questions that, that higher education researchers are grappling with, including many at Northwestern University. This particular collaboration with District 65 and ETHS is not going to address those particular questions. Because, because the primary point to this collaboration between District 65, ETHS, and Northwestern is to fig, is, is in some regards, the college persistence is a stand-in for, we don't know all those different things you're talking about, but it's a stand-in for people who leave 12th grade in Evanston Township High School, prepared to be successful in, in, in college. So, I mean, I think that, that it's, one thing which I think is extremely important would be if down the road, we were able to start to identify, what are the attributes of the schools that, that when people leave ETHS, what are the attributes of the colleges and universities that lead to persistence? Because that might also help with the college advising model at, at, at ETHS. And I think if, if Evanston High was saying, "Look, we really want to work with, with Northwestern researchers to try to address that," I know that there are a number of people, such as Jim Rosenbaum or Simone Spillander, Karabu Jackson or Mesmin Destin, who would jump at the opportunity to collaborate with, with ETHS to address that. But I think that, I think that the first order, as I'm reading this, the first order priorities are to think about actionable policies and practices within the time from pre-K to, to grade 12, that, that could be worked on. And the types of things then you're describing become more of those unknown factors that Lila was describing, as opposed to something that's, that's actionable. Because ETHS can't control the financial aid packages, for example, that, that, you know, University of Illinois puts out or something of that nature.
Financial literacy is a way to do that.
Yeah, exactly.
As you go through the process, before entering, so they have some sense of how to finance and not go into debt. So my follow-up one would be, so this, this could take quite some time and I'm just trying to get an understanding, because where's our baseline? So we're, like, how far back are we going? Because as Jonathan mentioned, I mean, you guys were just, you guys are really getting your, your grip now where this, the structures built for your, your research and everything. So really, since you've been in that mode, there really hasn't been a cohort that has graduated. Like, there hasn't been one cycle. So I'm just wondering, like, as a cohort, where are you looking? Where's the beginning? And of course, the end would be college graduation persistence. So how are we following these students? Where are we starting from? Since we are looking at indicators that go back at the lower levels, the grades. So what is, do you guys have a sense of, how are you going to track these students from when? And when will that first cycle be completed?
So, so I mean, I think that there are a number of things that have, that are happening simultaneously. I mean, so first of all, this notion of a, of an on-track indicator is not an end-all, be-all, right? It's a mechanism for figuring out where to help to shine, shine the light. But then that's going to then, and that's something that is fundamentally an iterative, iterative process, right? It's the type of thing, that the benefit of this partnership between District 65, ETHS, and, and Northwestern is, the goal is for us, for this to be so embedded that, that we're going to be able to, first of all, be able to continue, continuously improve the on-track, the on-track indicators. That will help, for example, if it looks like there are particular areas that seem, that seem especially sticky, that might help to inform, inform the school districts a little bit more about particular places that they might want to try to look, look at for leverage. But simultaneous to this is, is the other piece of NIRA. So this is just one example of what, what we're all doing together. So the other piece of NIRA is that each of the school districts has come up with their first-order research agendas. And the research agendas are, are a set of problems of practice that the school districts really want to collaborate with Northwestern to try to solve. Then Northwestern researchers, thanks to the data agreements that we've all executed, Northwestern researchers can say, "Oh, okay, I have an interest in mutually working with you on this particular problem of practice." And then, that, that, then that works together with the school district and the researcher, then work together to try to address that mutually. So the thing is, so it's not like we're doing one thing and then waiting till that thing's done and then start another thing and another thing. That would make me unbelievable, that would make me even more frustrated than Jonathan is right now, if that were the case. But I think, I think instead, if we're, if we're, if you imagine that, that this is, this is, this is a mechanism for helping to make sure that there's mutuality between, between the interests of world-class researchers at Northwestern, the interest of the, of the policymakers, practitioners, experts in the school systems, and try to get those, the more that mutuality is there, the more they're going to get the, the districts are going to get the information they need faster. I don't know if, I don't, I keep looking back because you're not at the table. I don't know, Peter, Peter or Maria or Carrie, do you have anything to add besides that? Or am I characterizing what you're saying?
So I know that Peter and Carrie work together a lot to figure out the cohorts for the initial part of the studies. I think it would be great if either or both of you could just do that a little bit.
So the one thing I would just add is, in, in District 65, I would add, in District 65, we went through a student information system conversion in 2009. And so that is really kind of the baseline year from which we can track student data going forward. We do have some information from our mainframe system that existed before then, but it's not necessarily comparable, tracked in the same way as the same data fields. And so what that means is that we have one cohort of 8th graders who we can track from 8th grade through the college persistence variable. And we have many cohorts of students who we can track from middle school into ETHS for high school. And so the approach that we've taken with the research so far is to go ahead and look at that one cohort, knowing that a group of 800 kids, 100 of whom don't commit to ETHS because they choose other high school options, isn't going to be robust enough to give us a measure that we can rely on in the same way that we could if we had several cohorts of students. However, we can then begin to work on things like tracking middle school students into 9th grade outcomes or 10th grade outcomes, given that we will have some measures that could be created about 9th or 10th grade that are then tracked to college persistence. And so I think there are some ways that we can, for the middle school population, get some reliable measures that are a good indicator of future success. But we may have to sort of, it's not a direct flight, right? We've got to make one stop on the way to get there. And so that's the limitation on the, on the elementary school side.
To kind of elaborate on where they are the data, so 202, they have three cohorts of graduates, five-year graduates from ETHS that goes back and lets them look at persistence. Those are graduates from 2012, 13, 14, I think, they're five-year grads. So that gives them at least two or more years of persistence in college. So, so those cohorts, when we line up to District 65, there's just that one cohort that Peter was referring to. Once they have more thoroughly gone through and done more analyzing with data, then we'll be able to give them more recent cohorts that will include more recent cohorts that have, from District 65, that have gone through to test their, their models on. So there is, when they say that their data hasn't come, there's still data they have, but then there's more data for cohorts. And by that time, they'll have graduated and they'll have more National Clearinghouse data on to use.
But I'll reiterate, you're, back to your question, what Carrie just said. We don't have to wait for the current 9th graders to graduate. We have graduated cohorts now and we have this longitudinal information about them. So we can start looking at those cohorts and, and start back mapping now. So, so no, it's not waiting several years for more kids to graduate. Now, we'll keep loading up, you know, every, we're sending another group out in, in, in two more weeks. So we'll keep loading up, but there are cohorts to work from already.
All right, Candace.
Thank you all. I, I, one insight, so I think I share a little bit of Jonathan. You know, we're, you know, this is taking long, like, everything good takes a long time. But I will say first, before I ask my questions, just having you show the slide about, and I know this is early data, right? But that grades in middle school or in 7th grade were more predictive than college career readiness, to me, sent off a light bulb. You know, we, at a board level, never, I think we have had some accountability reports that have incorporated middle school grades for a specific reason. But we don't look at that. And I think that this, that's, that's an example of the kind of learning we can take away of something to, you know, be cognizant of as a board, as we look at what we're holding ourselves accountable for and what are the metrics towards our, our, our strategic plan. You know, we don't have grades in there. And so, you know, that raises good questions already, so thank you for that. I think the other piece of this, I guess I'm observing, because we started talking about this with respect to a joint literacy goal, is that we have changed the goal. And we, as two boards, need to acknowledge that. From your point about a policy question here, is, you know, the joint literacy goal that we approved four or five years ago with an objective of, by the time the then-current kindergarteners reached 12th grade, that they would be proficient in reading as well as college career-ready. That's not the goal we're talking about today. And I'm not saying that this isn't a better goal, but it's not the same goal. So I think it just raises a question for our boards as to whether we need to revisit that goal. Or we still have the joint literacy goal and this is a different project. I'm, this is different work, I'm not clear. You know, just where, where's the path for the joint literacy goal? Because college persistence is different than proficient in proficiency in literacy by 12th grade and...
Well, I can speak for our district. We're measuring reading all the time. We give every student in this high school, pre- and post-test star testing, every single year. Every kid in this high school. So this doesn't preclude that goal at all. We are measuring student reading, we're measuring it in every single student, we're pre- and post-testing every single year, and we are committed to having students who are proficient readers. So this is something else. This is about post-secondary. We still have work to do K through 12 and, and, and this does not preclude or sideline that work at all. Kids have to know how to read.
So, and I, I wasn't espousing that we didn't think kids know, need to know how to read. It's just whether we have the...
This is a post-secondary, this is post-secondary.
Right.
That's different than the job we have to do in our two districts to have proficient readers. That's our job.
So I do think that that then points us back to, you know, the fact that we don't... So I do think that that then points us back to, you know, the fact that we don't yet have a common way to measure that, right? That, that literacy component. So are we, or do we believe we do our work without that common set of back, backtrack benchmarks for the literacy component? And we just continue to do the work? And this is the component that we can measure? Um, or not? I, I'm not a hundred percent clear.
Just to jump in here, I think one of the, what, what may have caused some of this confusion is that when we, year after year, still did not have these joint measures that went across, um, both districts, um, at some point, we were told, well, we're waiting for the, the research project that we're doing with Northwestern. And maybe that, you know, was like a, a, sort of a misdirection, that that, maybe we're mixing apples and oranges here.
Maybe, I, and. Um, but, so I, I do think there's an open question as to, are we gonna measure the joint literacy goal separate from this work, which is really important and meaningful? And clearly, we're all committed to, you know, to proficiency, or it sounds like that. But, um, so I will just leave that there, not to answer, not to be answered right now, but I think it's an open question.
I wanted to jump in on, I mean, I think I share the range of emotions that have been shared, and this is, it's fantastic to have the partnership and to have the work going. Um, I'm not a doctor or a baseball scout, so pardon the metaphor. But if a, if a doctor looking at a newborn is looking at head circumference, body temperature, blood pressure, weight and length as key measures for the health of the being, um, and, uh, baseball scouts looking at batting for average, running speed, batting for power, arm strength and fielding percentage, you just showed us those metrics for, you know, high school, right? And indicators for post-secondary success, right? Um, are you doing this in a way that will allow you or us to replicate the project on a middle school and early childhood level? Because the indicators for success are different at the early childhood level. And we're, we're looking all the time at data that shows that our achievement gap starts at the day the kids come into our, our buildings. And, you know, I appreciate the college persistence goal. This is a, a joint meeting, this is a, a joint project, I get that, but that's too late for the kids that are in our sixty-five system, uh, by, by a decade. And, um, you know, there, if you talk to a kindergarten teacher, there's letter identification, letter sound identification, right? We've got all the ability to hold a book and take a picture walk. We've got all these early indicators for, and it gets more qualitative, granted, and you're not into, you're not doing the mixed methods research here. Um, but there has to be a way for us to dig into that a little bit, too, because the elementary schools are providing kids who can't read at grade level with intervention support, and we don't know which ones are working as well. Because the teacher who is the point of impact that's changing the trajectory doesn't know it, because by the time the change happens, the kid's beyond with the next group, right? And so that's the dysfunction of our system, that we pass kids on from year to year. And for me, the research project here is only beneficial if there's an ability for educators to get the study and the information that says that we, as boards, are investing in programs and systems and training for teachers that are having X, Y and Z impact, and then we can discard the things that don't work. And I'm just wondering if there's some replication that can happen down the road so that we can dive into the early childhood world as well.
So two quick things, and actually, I can speak to, uh, to what Candace was saying as well, right? So first of all, one of the things that's really, um, really, uh, beneficial about this approach that is being developed is this notion of being able to come up with a cascading system of on-track indicators. So such that the ultimate goal is to be looking at indicators in the early grades that actually are, um, that are actually, um, uh, synchronized to the indicators that would happen in, in the later elementary grades and into the middle grades and into early high school grades and into twelfth grade and on, thereon. So, so one of the goals is to actually come up with actually, in the fir- for the first time in American education, um, um, this set of indicators that actually is fully, um, that's, that's kind of fully synchronized across. So I mean, that's something that, when I think about why, um, I find this to be, uh, potentially such a model, um, it, potentially such a model, it's because, uh, that's a more ambitious goal, but as you mentioned, an absolutely crucial and essential goal. Um, and one thing that's made, been made a little more complicated in Evanston, because we have two separate school districts, but where the, the collaboration between District sixty-five and District two oh two, um, is really helping to, um, get past that ex, that extra hurdle as well. But then the other thing to mention, right, and this gets to one of the questions you were raising, Candace, right, is, is this, is this notion that the on-track indicator is just, is just one, uh, product, uh, that's part of a much broader collaboration. So when you look at the, um, the research agendas that, um, that E T H S put forward and District sixty-five put forward, plastered all over that research agenda, for example, are questions such as, um, such as the literacy goal, uh, for example. So what are, in each of the two, each of the two school districts' research agendas, um, um, uh, the literacy goal is focused. Uh, but then, of course, there are numerous other questions within the research, uh, the research agenda. And there, the idea is that we're never going to be able to find matches for every one of those research questions. But suppose we could find answers to forty percent of those research questions? That's forty percent more of the answers than, than we gotten before. And if we can go and find, um, that mutuality between, say, Kirabo Jackson at Northwestern and District sixty-five, then suddenly, on a research question they're both interested in, suddenly we're, um, suddenly we're able to, uh, and, and suddenly we're able to be able to know certain things. And that, by the way, uh, is one of the reasons when I mentioned McGaw-Y, uh, is one of the reasons why I really, um, I think that, that as we move in the, in the future, uh, I hope that, that we'll be able to fur- further integrate the Y into this, uh, into this relationship as well. Because so many of our kids in Evanston are educated also in the Y. And so to be thinking about the complementarities between the work that's going on in the Y and that's going on, for example, in sixty-five or two oh two, can only then further help us to try to unlock these, unlock these different, these different things. So, so, um, uh, I wouldn't want anybody to walk away thinking that, that the on-track indicator is the only thing we're kind of inter- interested in. But even that on-track indicator, the aspiration is to take it all, to be able to take it all the way back to the very early grades. But then what happens is, as you've heard, what happens is, we have to go and have, um, we have to figure out the, the stuff in, uh, eighth grade forward, match the college. And when we feel like we have that really, really good fidelity, then we can start looking at things like the relationship between seventh grade and tenth grade. And then if we figure that, we can do like sixth grade to ninth grade, and then fifth grade to eighth grade. And the more we're able to scaffold that, the more we, um, can start feeling like everything is synchronized to some common, some common goal. Uh, I am very convinced, um, based on my own research, um, done in other settings, that it should be possible to come up with something where at every single stage in a child's development, we can go and, and figure out, okay, here's a prediction of some downstream, with the notion that's, again, as Lai was said, it's just a prediction. So I'm, I'm actually extremely bullish, and I'm, I actually am bullish that we can make a lot of progress in a very short amount of time.
Can I ask you to go back to the indicators slide? Because I, I really think, uh, that, that, that can set the, the context. I, I, for me, it's really exciting, because I think for years in American education, we, we've narrowed down, um, the way we measure children and what they know to reading and math, right? And we know those are core, core skills that we all have to have. But at the same time, I really, I really think that if we take a more comprehensive approach, and we look at different factors that, again, so grades, progression, course-taking pattern, so that, a lot of those indicators can be, I see them being able to be backtracked all the way to early childhood. I see that possibility. Uh, you know, attendance, there's some really, really incredible research from, uh, He- Hetty Chang, who's doing some incredible work, uh, in California around the impact of attendance on, on grades and, and college readiness, back, all the way back to kind, to, to pre-K. So again, and, and, so all of those, all of those measures, I think, are, are really, give us a broader view of, 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 of child development, right? And can back, we can backtrack all the way through. For me, it's really exciting, uh, and I, and I appreciate the work and the push, because again, I, I think it's, we are way beyond just sticking to the reading ma- or reading score and a math score. And, 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 and just standardized test scores on those things. Because what, what do standardized test, test scores tell us? Uh, just tells us who has money, who has access, who has income and, and access to these opportunities to, to get those better scores, right? Uh, I'm very happy to see that we're broadening, uh, the way we measure students, uh, and, and, and their capacity and their access to opportunities in, in, in our community. So, you know, I appreciate the work, and then, and again, I hope, again, that we eventually get to the point where, uh, then we ha- can have targeted supports for our students. So let's, let's take attendance, for instance. So we know that, again, if a kid doesn't attend school, what can we do in, in, uh, starting from pre-K? What can we do to, uh, target some social service supports for that parent, that child and their family, right? So that we can get them on track and get them attending school, so then they can learn how to read and do math and eventually move on de- developmentally. So, so it's exciting to see that, that we are broadening, we're moving beyond just reading and math scores and looking at, uh, other aspects of, of, uh, of, uh, going to school and, and, and learning and being prepared.
Just a quick question. Did exposure ever come up at all for these factors? Uh, students being exposed to the college experience, having, uh, their parents having gone to school, or, uh, awareness about the college-going process, even before high school? I'm just wondering, cause exposures, I don't see it up there. It's, it's just something that I've, over time, that seems to have had an impact. Like when you look at the, the, um, the federally funded post-secondary programs, the trio programs, um, that help to give students, potential first-generation college students exposure, and research leads to the more student, the earlier the students are exposed to college, the more likely it is that they will attend. It's an expectation and hopefully persists, exposure.
Sure. So I mean, we're starting with things that are in the administrative data. Um, but then what you're describing, again, is precisely the types of things that, um, maybe are not part of an on-track indicator, but are, again, of first-order research importance to the high school and to, um, to District sixty-five. So again, um, yeah, I think it's a matter of what we, with the on-track indicator, it has to be things that are kind of universally measured, that are measured within the administr- kind of passively collected administrative data. But that, um, but that's just going to be, uh, one component of, the, the idea there is not to try to capture every aspect of, of college preparation, likelihood of attending and succeeding, but rather to help to get a sense as to where to shine some of the lights. But then at the same time, there are all these other things that are outside of the on-track indicator that are extremely important. And so, for example, um, there's a half a dozen researchers at Northwestern who are interested in precisely questions about what's the role of information in determining the likelihood that students will go to college? And, um, you were talking about things like debt, for example, and successful and being in su- being in supportive institutions and the like. And so that's a question that's on, uh, E T H S's research agenda. That's a question that is, eh, that is of research interest in Northwestern people. That's a question that we're gonna find a match between the two, but it's not a question that's gonna be part of the on-track indicator, because it's something that has to be measured through surveys. Um, and so unless we can figure out a way to collect those data kind of systematically in a way that could get into an, an on-track indicator, um, it's going to be, that's, that's, that's not gonna make it into this precise thing. But I know it's by, I don't have to say it, because it's Eric's nodding, right? I mean, it's one of those questions that, that E T H S administration thought was so important, they put in this, their, their list of their highest inter- highest-order research questions. Um, so that question, where, is gonna get answered, because we have some of the world's leading experts on precisely that topic on our faculty. Um, uh, so all we need is, um, you know, in this case, Spencer Foundation or National Institutes of Health or U S Department of Education to help to support that, uh, that research with a little bit of money. And, uh, between E T H S and that researcher, they'll be off to the races.
Thanks again for the work, Candace.
Oh, absolutely. No, I mean, um, um, thank you for all, as an Evanstonian, I am grateful to each of you for your service, uh, to our community.
So that, that last question, um, and I, I wanna ask this again, only because it's not, it's not for you guys, it's the same question I asked at our last joint meeting when we talked about this before. You know, we had the SOAR presentation, and the first thing that happened at the end of hearing engaged teachers, engaged students doing something awesome was, how do we replicate it? All right? That's the first thing we all wanna know, is how do we get it to happen in more places? And you mentioned passive data that's collected. That's the easiest free to use, because it's just, it's collected along the way, right? It's the registration stuff, it's in the C I S, it's, it's how it works. Our, our faculty in the K five and K eight systems have data that they need to actively be collecting in a manner that can be used later as a part of this to do more, um, digging deep research into what specific factors may or may not change trajectory. And I, when I asked this before, it was, you know, are, are we collecting this? Have we already alerted people to the fact that we wanna know who's, who's getting reading, reading intervention support? Who's receiving math intervention support? Who's receiving language support? And what type of support are they getting, right? We had a parent come and speak to multisensory, uh, methods and strategies for teaching reading. You know, how are we addressing students whose native language is, is English, but they still need E L support? Or native language is something else, or the newcomer that comes to the system in fourth grade, and how their trajectory gets changed? Um, that's all, uh, there's a whole lot of messy data there. Um, we have it in the system, we just don't ask people for it, so that it can be used for longitudinal research studies. And here we are engaging in something that it sounds like is gonna take about a decade, just to, you know, temper the expectations for a year from now, to, to get to something that might be meaningful to us at maybe a second or third grade level. Um, but at a District sixty-five level, we have to actively spend time identifying what experiences kids are having, so that it can be used as a part of the study. Otherwise, in five years, in one year, in eight years, we're gonna have the same data that we have, which is, as the era eighteen thousand people at the research conference can tell you, these are already well-identified and researched indicators for success later on. Not to say that we shouldn't still look at it, right? There's still local information that we can get from that study. But if we're doing specific things here for our specific kids, why don't we identify those things and track that data somewhere as a part of student profiles, so that we can use it later on? And again, not to be answered now, but that's, that's an institutional question. Um, and it was referenced several times, that we might have some data sharing issues between sixty-five and two oh two, and to me, that's unacceptable. And I think administratively, you guys gotta figure that out, so that when you wanna share data across systems, you can do that smoothly.
Three quick responses. First of all, it's not gonna take ten years. I mean, none of the things that we were describing would take ten years, it's just you can't snap your fingers, but it's a much different. Uh, second, the second thing, I mean, but even the things of where we're talking about this cascading work, that's more about, uh, it's, it's more, I mean, I think it's possible with the existing variables, um, it's possible, it, you know, it should be possible to do that much faster. So this on-track indicator going back for, further. Uh, second is, anything that's being collected in the data set that has, even if it hasn't been cleaned and used, that's just a matter of elbow grease. Um, and so it's just, again, it won't happen instantaneously, but it can happen relatively quickly. Uh, the second set of, uh, second set of responses is that actually, I, I think when you're hearing, when you, i- if you heard this question about, um, uh, problems between sixty-five and two oh two, it was, it was, that's, that's only because the data, when you talk about the data systems not speaking to one another, it's just a matter of, of, that there are some tech, you know, technical issues that, that the professionals in both districts have been working on to make that happen. It's just, they weren't designed to be, uh, to be, uh, connected, but it's the type of thing that, that they've been working double time to, to get to solve. So I don't think there's anything to be resolved, except just a tiny little bit of patience. The third thing I'll mention again is that there are, uh, dozens and dozens and dozens of questions of, questions of practice, Joseph, that you're describing, that, um, that are, that are directly related to, in your case, the issues you're talking about around Paul's re- uh, set of research priorities that, that District sixty-five has ident- has articulated. And there are dozens of researchers at Northwestern who are interested in those precise problems of practice. And so the question is just trying to find the, the double coincidence, the match between those two, um, so that one can do these things. So I think the notion, um, so, so, so I think, I think the notion, um, uh, my- So, I think the notion, um, so, so, so I think, I think the notion, um, uh, my, my reaction then to your, your statement was you're way too pessimistic. Um, there's, um, there, there, each of the things you were describing are things that are feasible. There's a matter of, it's just a matter of getting the right people to, um, to wanna dance at the same time. The last thing I will mention, though, is that the, the, the one place where I think you were slightly too glib was the notion of those eighteen thousand researchers and the like saying, oh, we all know that stuff. The fact is, we don't, we don't know that stuff. We know, yeah, each of these things, we know higher grades are related to better college outcomes. And fewer disciplinary incidents are related to better col- yeah, we absolutely know that. But we don't actually know how these things fit to, it's fit together in a way that's actually predictive. Um, because, um, because that type of thing tends to come from these big national surveys that don't have the granularity that are necessary to actually be meaningful for act- for, for a school, district-level problem of practice. That's why the freshman-on-track that, uh, the U-Chicago Consortium did was so remarkable. It's like, yeah, everybody knew that college grades mattered, but nobody knew exactly what, nobody knew, like, the, what the functional form was, actually, until the U-Chicago Consortium worked together with CPS on that one piece, and then it unlocked something really big and important for that district. So, in that regard, at the same time, I wanna mention this, all those things you're talking about are super, super important, but I wanna urge you and your colleagues and anybody watching on TV land not to dismiss this type of work, too, in terms of the types of extraordinary information it's going to provide to Eric and Paul and members of their staff bec- in terms of the predictive power, because nobody's done it before.
And I appreciate that, but that's also why, seven months ago, when I asked if we were collecting the granular data, 'cause you'll need it at some point, I'm asking it again now, because you can give a survey to a high school kid and they can offer a lot of insight as to their experiences, and you can't do the same thing to a, a much younger student. And I think it's important that the system that takes care of those students and provides those experiences intentionally is finding some way to track it, because at some point, I would love for you to be able to have access to it, to make meaning from it. And that's my fear, is that, is that we're not necessarily collecting it in a way that's gonna be easy to say, here it is. So that maybe you, you find another research question a year from now that you wanna dive into. I wanna make sure we have the information to say, yeah, we do have that data to, to hand over, so you can play with it.
I think as this partnership develops, um, we're gonna be doing more and more and more of that. And I'll just go back to the thing I led with my foregrounding about my relationship with the Gainesville, Florida, school district, is that, um, uh, so the way in which all of that stu- we revolutionized practice in Gainesville. And it started because I was just having lunch once a week, having Thai buffet once a week with this guy Mel Lucas, who was a, a mid-level, um, a li- mid-level, uh, person, a, a division chief in the school district. And we just would spend two hours every Friday talking about the things that he and his colleagues were wondering about. And we'd throw ideas about, we came up with research ideas together, and we were doing these different types of things, and they started collecting different types of data, and this was in the nineties. Right, I mean, the thing that's really amazing now is that we can do so much more. And frankly, also, with all respect, due respect to Latchell County Public Schools, the level of intellectual firepower, uh, that, who are, uh, members, uh, on this professional staffs of these two school districts far outstrips the intellectual, uh, I can't believe I'm saying this out loud, it's being recorded, it's going on YouTube. Somebody's gonna go back to the folks at Gainesville and I'm like, there's gonna be some hate mail. You know what I mean?
You don't have to finish the sentence.
Can I just say?
Yes.
So, I think when you gave this, um, presentation or introduced this about a year ago, maybe you were sitting at the table alone. Or Amy, you might've been there, um, you weren't, so, I mean, I'll, let me reframe it. I don't know, well, I'll speak for myself, I'm not frustrated. Um, there's a sense of urgency and excitement that, that I'm hearing around this. So, of course, we want the information so that we can use it to inform how we do things in the future, but that doesn't mean we stop doing what we know we need to do right now, right? I mean, if that was the point, then I guess none of us would be here. And, and, and so, the numbers, of course, were, were like, oh, okay, we still have more work to do. Or we still have work to do, or we can't stop doing what we've been doing. We can't erase the goal, the literacy goal, because it's still there. We can't, um, stop partnering outside. And I'm not just excited because you've mentioned McCall YMCA several times, but the fact of the matter is, the fact of the matter is, we knew that there was a literacy issue within our community, within our, our nation. So, we used a curriculum that had been in the works for twenty years to test it here at Evanston, and we've been doing it for the past six or seven summers. Um, we're using the six to sixteen curriculum for our, our Y Achievers program from the University of Chicago. So, we don't wait, I'm not waiting for Northwestern to hand us anything. I'm saying, I can't wait. I'm excited, you know, for what you're gonna bring our way, so that, you know, if we're not sitting around this table, then the board members that will be, or that school administration that will be sitting around this table, will be able to use that information. So, you know, I appreciate the urgency, um, but I'm glad you have a team to help you do this work, 'cause this is not easy work. Um, and, and I'm hoping that whatever we get, whatever we all get, we will use it to best, you know, make the decision and inform the, the age groups that we're responsible for. And then continue to work collaboratively to make sure that there are no gaps, you know, for our children. So, uh, you know, so I'm excited that you have a team that can help you move, you know, faster to get this done. But I'm not, um, um, unrealistic or ho- un, you know, and not hopeful about how long this work takes and, and how intentional you're trying to be, so that we can do the work that we need to do in a very thoughtful geared way, instead of just going at it, so.
Two quick responses, number one, amen. Number two, um, when you think about the team, you're looking at a, just a small subset right now. Um, a- about a month ago, we had, uh, uh, a, uh, a presentation, Paul and Eric and Peter and Maria and Carrie and a number of the other people were in the, were in the room, uh, introduced, basically kicking off the fact that these data-sharing agreements and the research agendas with the Evanston districts were live. And we had a hundred and ten Northwestern researchers in an auditorium. And these people represented not just my little school, but also the College of Arts of Sciences, Weinberg, the medical school, the law school, the engineering school, the school of music, the business school. Um, so when, so what we're poised to do, actually, right now, is, um, thanks to the work of NIRA and, uh, and the work that, uh, which is the work of Northwestern and the two districts, we're actually poised not just for, to get the seat people you're seeing, but, um, I mean, that was just a hundred and ten people showing up on a Wednesday afternoon or something of that nature. Um, uh, we're ready to leverage, to bring together the, the first-order quest, problems of practice that you all are worrying about, uh, together with, with the entire Northwestern University, um, whether or not they're in our school. So, in that regard, I totally agree with you. Everything you're do- everything you're saying is absolutely right, you gotta, can't, we can't wait, we, with, this is urgent. But then, at the same time, uh, you're gonna be able to, um, we're, we're, the, the infrastructure is there now to connect the school districts with, and the Y, with, um, uh, with the, um, um, with a set of people who want, who, who are, who want to know the answers, so, yay.
I would just add, too, um, and, and I think without, certainly don't wanna underestimate the importance of what we can learn from these measures. But then, just echoing, I think, um, what Joey was saying around, we have a lot of information about other things that probably would be powerful indicators of success for students. And if there's a way that we can know now, and maybe, part of this might be that we're just not, as board members, are not necessarily privy to some of the conversations that you've been having with, uh, administration around the, uh, problems of practice and, and whatnot. So, I think some of the comments you're hearing are probably our conversations that you've had, that we just haven't, um, heard about yet. So, you're hearing kind of our sort of problems of practice that we would like to, to, um, to see being taken on. But I think recognizing that what might be some of the, the gaps here, what are, we're, that can connect some of this information is that information about what are the interventions they're getting? What are the other access-to-enrichment opportunities that kids are getting? Like summer programming at the YMCA or with, uh, um, our many partners? What about after-school opportunities or before-school opportunities? Uh, I think those are the kinds of things that hopefully, even if that can't be right now the focus, if we know that that's something that can be important, that we can figure out, what are we already collecting? What do we need to collect more or better in a way that can be usable? Um, I, you know, I, and, and, you know, the, this is, and I definitely applaud expanding this to include the YMCA. I mean, I think that we have the whole Evanston Cradle to Career initiative that is really focused around how do we support children and, um, youth and students in our community. Uh, I think there could be some really powerful ways to include just broader information gathering, um, to really understand what are the experiences that children are having that can predict their success over the long term.
So, to add to that, one of the things we launched this year with District sixty-five was an initiative to document all the out-of-school opportunities and participation patterns of students. So, every, um, we just, every District sixty-five student has a record in the Co-sixty-five, um, system. And we're now working with Evanston to document all the programs. And beginning next year, particularly with the middle-grade students, we will have a record, uh, going forward at all their out-of-school participation, with the goal of when the students move into high school, we'll bring the system into high school. So, then you'll be able to correlate and look at, we'll be, add these databases together to be able to look at the relationship between out-of-school participation. And also, not just out-of-school, even online learning opportunities that we're also documenting.
Wow, fantastic, thank you.
And Suni, just, just to, I just wanna reiterate that this thing up here that you're looking at is one, it's a first product, but it's one tiny, miniscule aspect of the overall effort. Um, it's an, it's an on-track indicator. It's, it's just one indicator intended to do something. And so, what happens is, is you get into, you can get into something where, you, you know, suppose, I mean, you know, if you, whenever you're doing any type of indicator, remember, all of these things are interacting with one another, so there's a limit to the number of variables you can stick on the right-hand side of a predictive equation before you don't have prediction anymore. And so, you could, we all can imagine, I think we all can imagine, if you look at all the things we could collect, you could get four hundred variables on the right-hand side. When they all, uh, interact, and suddenly, you're actually having something on the order of sixty-two thousand parameters. But if we only have a few hundred kids a year, we actually can't even estimate that thing. So, the thing is, you need, for an on-track indicator, you need to be extremely parsimonious. Uh, but that doesn't mean that that's the only thing that matters. That means that all those other things that are on District sixty-five or District two oh-two's research agendas, even if they're not feeding into this very specific measure, um, are things that are of essential importance. And, and we're gonna be trying to find, connect the, connect researchers together with the districts. So, in that regard, I mean, the thing I'd like, I, the reason I'm, I'm saying this, I, I hope I don't sound like a broken record, but each of these, uh, but I, I, we've had, that's a little conversation where, where you're saying, well, what about this? And I say, yeah, of course that it matters. And that's, that's actually on Paul's research agenda, or it's on Eric's research agenda, and so, we're gonna try to find people to do it. But just because the thing we care about doesn't mean it should fit into the on-track indicator. The on-track indicator has to be something that's very parsimonious. And so, the key is then, is this iterative process that, that I was talking about with regard to Jonathan, which is great, is that it's not like this thing is gonna be stamped and done, but rather, just like what Paul was mentioning, what Eric was mentioning, over time, we're gonna learn, right? We're all a community of learners, all, uh, each of our institutions is dedicated to, to learning, not just helping other people learn, but learning ourselves. And so, if we find things in all this other research that is going to be, wow, that thing really matters, well, then maybe we kick one of these other things out of the on-track indicator and bring that other thing in. Because, um, this is all supposed to be to help the, help the school districts figure out what you wanna do better. So, in that regard, I think it's, 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 um, I, I, I just wanna urge everybody, especially you, the decision-makers, to, uh, to not pack everything into the on-track indicator. But I also would love you, everybody to be looking at your, your, you know, constantly having, and this is where the boards and the administration need to constantly be looking at your research agendas. Do you agree that all the things, are there things that you wanna have on your research agendas? Not, because then, if it's on the research agenda from a district, then we might be able to find folks at Northwestern who might be able to help you with that. So, um, so that's the thing, I, I guess I wanna just encourage you all to be thinking of, be thinking about is just what goes into the on-track indicator? What's on your research agenda? How can we help? I mean, that's what, that's what we wanna do.
So, would it, maybe I'm oversimplifying this, but to say that we'll have the on-track indicators, but then the research agenda would basically be kind of creating the indicators to the indicators. Is that a fair simplification?
Or, or for the, or, or maybe not everything is, just like you mentioned, right? So, what, this is not, this is not, uh, literacy's not in that particular thing. But literacy is something that's central to both of the school districts, um, uh, outcomes of interest. Well, there are many things on your research agenda, the research projects that could study, that could be looking at what are the things that are improving literacy skills that aren't necessarily being play- fed into this indicator per se. This indicator is a mechanism just for helping to look, it, the, the aspiration here is to help so that, um, so that the di- relevant districts kinda have a sense as to, are there some, are there some places that might be particular problem spots? Or areas, uh, area, you know, areas to help to shine a deeper light? Um, but not everything has to be tied to this. Actually, I'll tell you then, as an Evanstonian, um, I wouldn't want everything to be tied to, to, to this outcome, because I think that would, that would be, uh, that would be, uh, really limiting what we care about. Uh, but I also know, as somebody who had three kids go through these school systems, uh, no- nobody on, uh, nobody in the school district, uh, leadership or school boards would tolerate that anyway. So, um, uh, otherwise, I wouldn't have wanted to trust my kids to, to District sixty-five and District two oh-two. But, uh, but the fact that you all are engaged in so many things you care deeply about, um, means that we wouldn't wanna ever simplify things to just one number. So, if, if that, if that helps to be thinking about, um, but the nu- this number will be helpful, but it's not the goal.
So, this makes sense to me, that sometimes we, we try to do everything and in order to really get the job done, we need to really kind of be very specific about what we are going to do. Um, and then just do, and do it well. There, there are, there will always be, as, as I hear you talk, obviously, um, other research projects that the school district will always have to look at, and it won't always fall under this category. So, I'm, I'm excited about this, actually. I, I feel like you've really, even this report, this time together, has been extremely helpful. And, and we, we could have you back next meeting and the next meeting. There's a lot, there's a lot here. And, and as I understand, you'll continue to evolve. This will continue to evolve and we'll have information that will come. We don't have to wait for, um, you know, the big unveiling. We'll have, we'll have pieces of this nuggets that will just continue to be, to come out and be helpful to us, so.
All the teams are talking to one another all the time.
It's great.
And so, as a result, um, as a result, um, uh, one of the reasons, even though I've been doing more of the blabbing right now, uh, one of the reasons I wanted my, uh, my friends, I feel super bad for Amy and Love who have long commutes. Sorry, um, but one of the reasons I wanted to, I asked them all to be here tonight was also just so you would know, I mean, sometimes it's nice to just put faces to, to, to people. We have, we have a team now at Northwestern that's, their jobs, each of these, each of these people's jobs is to, uh, is to be connectors between the broader Northwestern community and your needs. And so, that's something, that's something that we're, as long as I'm the end of this school, I, I'm committed to that. And, um, and, uh, I know that I'm not alone. Uh, Morty Shapiro, our president, is deeply, deeply committed to this as well. Jonathan Holloway, our provost, is deeply committed to this, so it's not just- So, it's not just if David drops dead of something that this is all going to go away. Hopefully, that won't happen anytime soon. But, but so, I, I, that's, that's the reason I wanted them to, you to see that there's, there's a set of really talented people here.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Thank you to all of you. Yeah, thank you for you.
Can I, can I, I want to underscore that, though, because in, across this country, this is a unique partnership that really doesn't exist. And so, the, the several hours that we've just spent working through, but working through really important issues, working through essential issues. And we're sitting here with the dean of the School of Education and Social Policy, some of the leading scholars who are at Northwestern. We've got 110 other leading scholars who are ready to play. This is a unique moment that we have to tip our hat to President Shapiro, Provost Holloway, and, and to Dean Figlio, because even with some substantive frustration, we're going to actually lead the way to actually discover things that we haven't discovered in Evanston for years upon years upon years. And I just want to say thank you to you all for that.
Okay, I think we're making a shift. We're going to go on with our agenda, District 65, 202 collaborations review. Okay, I am ready.
So, so you see our two, you see our two CFOs coming forward?
I'm going to keep them to an hour.
Raphael and Mary.
All right.
Well, this is the latest our board meetings ever go, and we started a half hour earlier. So, this is giving us a new experience.
Yeah, my goal, my goal is, just so you know, nine o'clock. That's mine.
So, this is, this is only about a five-slide presentation. And they have prepared to just give a quick summary of how the collaborations are going.
We're hoping to be able to do this in five minutes and give you opportunities to ask questions.
That's a minute per slide. Good. You want to start or you want me to start? Okay. So, go ahead and go to the next slide. So, our, our intent tonight is really just to update you on some conversations that we've been having for probably about the last year and a half. And as you all know, Raphael joined us later in that conversation. So, just as a reminder, last February 2017, Mary Brown and myself presented at the joint meeting, gave the boards a very long spreadsheet of, I'm going to say collaborations to date. And if anyone would like that or would like me to send that out, we'd be happy to do that. I did, Raphael and I reviewed it, and just wanted to sort of recap that at that time, that particular grid encompassed a lot of things. Everything from, you know, TIF payments from the city and how we collaborate on.
On tax appeals.
Tax appeal, and we'll talk about that a little bit. Property tax appeals, just events that we share, Park School, which is a collaboration. And we tried to do, Mary and I at that point tried to do some rough totals of cumulative savings for the district. And so, we just wanted to note those numbers that as of last year, District 65 had over 3 million and District 202 had just over 2.7 million in estimated cumulative savings for everything from purchases to collaborations. So, we just wanted to remind you of that. So, I'll just kind of finish talking about the history, and then maybe Raphael can cover a couple slides of where we are now. So, as of that meeting in early 2017, we talked about some future potential collaborations, which included technology, software, and consulting where appropriate, and additional potential opportunities, which included some things as simple as space sharing for things like emergency events, meeting space, and professional development.
As well as even our graduations, middle school graduation.
Right, graduations. I, I think there's another planned meeting space for District 65 to come here in the fall. And so, we, we wanted to just kind of explore some additional things going forward, and we have, so. Okay, so this kind of brings us up to where we are, so I'll let Raphael.
As we mentioned earlier, we still collaborate on legal services. Periodically, we get appeals from taxpayer entity with appeals of 100,000 or more. Instead of going it alone and paying counsel to help us with the appeal process, we actually share the cost of doing that, and we realize savings from that.
And one thing I wanted to add to that is that we, Raphael may not even know this yet because I had the first conversation, but we're also going to have a conversation with the City of Evanston's Finance Department. I'm not sure exactly if, if they're, you know, experiencing legal expenses to defend against the same things that we are, but certainly where there's a property tax appeal, it affects all three of us. So, we're going to have a conversation next week. We already had the meeting planned. And one of the topics will be just seeing if there's even an opportunity for greater savings to collaborate with them as well on, on property tax appeals. And, and also, the, both of the districts in the past have, we had a joint bid for legal services and for audit services. And in one of those cases, we chose the same provider. And in one of those cases, we chose a different provider. But we both experienced actual savings from previous contracts as a result of doing that together. And we plan to do that in the future.
So, yeah, we used the same law firm, Franzic, or other like, for legal services. And when it came to auditing, we kind of went our separate ways. But I think the fact that we developed the IRP together gave us an opportunity to get some skills and savings.
This, this slide just talks about other purchases. I checked in with RIT Department, and I'm sure your IT department keeps you updated as well. But there was a recent collaboration on some Chromebook purchases. Sometimes those software and hardware purchases are difficult because we don't use the same things. But there was some competitive pricing given to us by a, a large vendor because we use pretty exclusively Chromebooks for the one-to-one program. We have other PCs and Macs throughout the school. But, and so, my understanding from RIT Department is that District 65 was able to capitalize on that discount pricing for our large order and then get some things that they needed at a savings because of that. You mentioned compostable trays to me.
The latest, the, the latest example of this was compostable trays. We had been looking at doing away with styrofoam plates because of the impact on the environment for years now. I think the last time we got pricing, we were looking at 22 cent a tray. But we were able to then pick it back on a huge contract that was offered by the company that makes that tray, Houdemacher, with New York, Chicago, LA, and a couple of other large urban school districts. Using that, we were able to get the prices down from 22 cent a tray to only 6 cent a tray, which is a huge savings. So, it's only a couple of cents more than the, the styrofoam tray that we're using right now. And we're going to do that in conjunction with 202.
So, overall, that will continue the same, you know, this is kind of our plan forever, if you will. I mean, it's not something with a start and an end date. But I, I also thought that it was important that we both mention, and, and I'm not as familiar with how District 65 uses co-ops and state bids, but I do know some of the situations, so you can, you can comment too. But, you know, in a lot of cases, purchasing co-ops and state bids save both of us more than we could ever obtain just by partnering with each other. And, and in some cases, we have the same opportunities. In some cases, we choose different ones. For example, USDA commodities, because our, you know, our food service departments are really linked together because we provide the meals for District 65. So, we both benefit and utilize the USDA commodities in conjunction with each other. We're both members of an insurance co-op that's called Clic, which is collective liability. We both experience better rates by being in this co-op than we could ever obtain on our own. I think you guys are also part of a health insurance co-op.
Yes, IBC.
Yeah, and then US Communities is a federal buying program that we utilize quite a bit here just to get, you know, contract pricing. And we also have utilized state bids for things like paper and vehicles.
And we do the same.
And you, you really couldn't beat those prices. So, it, our processes, I think, are really a combination of all of these things.
And even when we're thinking about buying stuff, since I've been at the district, I reach out to Mary. Mary and I, we talk very frequently to see the opportunities to work together to, to achieve savings on scale.
That might be it. And that's it. Speaking, though, of, of kind of reaching out to each other, what I have learned is that our IT departments do talk very regularly. And we didn't even need to remind them that we, you know, had these large meetings between the two districts last year to ask, you know, departments to really collaborate. But our operations departments speak and our IT departments speak. So, I think it's becoming more of a natural occurrence between those departments and not just between us and the financial function, so. That's all we have. We'll take questions if there are any. And if anyone needs the list, that's kind of cumulative, I'd be happy to provide it.
Maybe it would be helpful for you to send it out.
Sure.
Did we do it in five minutes?
Oh, I forgot to time you. So, I'll say yes. Questions from the board? Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. So, we are at our action items. And, and I, I see we're starting District 202. So, the first action is our consent agenda, which consists of approval of 2019-20 school calendar, approval of minutes from May 7, 2018 closed session minutes, and May 7, 2018 regular minutes, treasurer's report from March 2018, approval of bills, personnel agenda, appointments to staff, administrators certified exempt, operations and summer school, change in status, stipends and overload, resignation exempt and certified, retirement, support staff. And we also have an addendum, which includes appointments to staff, certified correction, operations, coach, as well as notice to remedy suspension teacher. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we're done.
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation outlined in the attached group motion and approve the April 2018 board meeting minutes, January, February 2018 committee meeting minutes, the personnel leaves, destruction of March 2016 closed session audio recording, the gift to Bessie Road School, March 2018 school treasurer's report, list of bills, budget amendment, the fiscal year 19 building use fees, 2018 summer capital projects, the fiscal year 19 treasurer's bond renewal, 2018-19 board meeting calendar, and the 2019-20 draft school calendar.
Yes.
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 Do you have another item? Okay. Adjournment to. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned at 10:10.